I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attendants?
President Schaper. Vice President Reese.
Present.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Hanser.
Present.
Trustee McDonough.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Whitney.
Here.
All right, going down our agenda, changes to the board agenda, there are none. All right, school presentations for the students, arts and athletics, academics, and recognition. I don't know who's going first.
Good evening, and I am so excited to be able to kick us off this evening. My name is Stephanie Ee and I am the principal at Clear Lake Elementary. And I am very proud to present five of our students from Clear Lake this evening for academic achievement. So last spring across the district, our third, fourth, and fifth grade students took what is called the M-Step Assessment. And tonight we are recognizing these five students for their achievement on that assessment. So within their grade level, they scored at the top of their class. And so we have Quinn Palowski and we also have Connor Peterson, who scored at the top of their class last year for mathematics. We have Lauren Nee and also Connor Peterson again, who scored at the top of their class for the English Language Arts Assessment. And then we have Abby Showers, who was a top student within her grade level for mathematics on the M-Step. And then we have Charlotte Gullen, who was a top student for English Language Arts for her grade level. So we are very proud at Clear Lake to be able to recognize all of them this evening. And we thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, I'm Paul McDevitt, I'm the principal of Leonard Elementary. And today with me I have Andrew Burgess, he's a fifth grader at Leonard Elementary, who is our fifth grade spelling bee champion this year. Each year our school participates in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. And we have a process where we go through and have a classroom bee, and then the top five from the classroom bee all come together in our gym in front of the whole fifth grade student body, some staff members, and of course a bunch of parents. And we have a two-wide spelling bee until we have one person left standing. And that person was Andrew Burgess this year, he's our fifth grade spelling bee. And the question he probably always gets is, what was the winning word?
Engulf.
Engulf was his winning word that he spelled correctly to win the spelling bee championship. He is now going to move on to the regional spelling bee championships over at Oakland Schools in a couple months. And we'll wish him the best of luck there as he represents Leonard Elementary and our community schools.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Gwynn, I'm the principal here at Lakeville Elementary, welcome to Lakeville. I have the privilege tonight to represent two students to bring to recognize for our PAWS mission, which is PAWS is an acronym that, sorry, PAWS is an acronym that P means principal, A means attitude, W stands for we care, and S stands for stay safe. So first, Jeff Van Aaron, always has a positive attitude, he is caring and kind towards everyone. He follows the rules which help keep him safe, and he's always principal even when no one's watching. He tries his very best every day to be a good person and the best version of himself. That's Jeff. Next I have Emily Cool. Emily Cool is attentive in class, she listens to the people that are speaking and asks very thoughtful questions that help everyone understand better. Even when we do activities that aren't her favorite, this is what her teacher said. She participates and tries her very best always. Emily truly cares about her fellow students and helps others when they are confused. She truly exemplifies PAWS at Lakeville. So thank you Jeff and thank you Emily.
Good evening, I'm Chad Boyd from Daniel Ashford Elementary. I have two students up here today, Hudson and Ursula. They are representing our leadership team at our school. We have ten second graders that form our leadership team. We have two teachers that lead our leadership team, Mrs. Reiser and Mrs. Moore. Mrs. Reiser is here today as well. Our leadership team takes action for our school and for our community. Some of the things that they've done so far this year, they completed a food drive in the month of November. They've also recognized some veterans that work at our school. They will continue to do additional school and community service projects as we continue throughout the year. And they will also take back to our school some other certificates for other members of our leadership team. So thank you Ursula and Hudson for representing our leadership team at Daniel Ashford.
Good evening. I am very excited to present Hazel Nicacia to the board this evening. Hazel has done exactly what we would hope for our kids to do in terms of taking action on their own. And so Hazel and Mrs. Alis Plats raised food and other goods at Thanksgiving time for her lighthouse charity. And when I had the opportunity to interview Hazel earlier this morning, how did you come up with this idea? Her response was exactly what we hoped for, I saw a person in need and that was enough to motivate Hazel to take action. Hazel first took action by asking her mom, how can we help with someone in need? And that's how they came up with this idea. I asked Hazel like why Thanksgiving, and she said Thanksgiving is one of my favorites. I love having family over and friends for Friendsgiving at my house. And so it sounds like she picked a time that is near and dear to her and to her family. And so I would like to congratulate Hazel for taking action and stepping up her reading skills.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Brad Bigelow, I am the principal at Oxford Middle School. It is a privilege this evening to introduce to you our 2023 Oxford Middle School Girls varsity team. They are joined this evening by their two coaches. On the far end we have Mr. Jason Katie and this is Ann Oliver on this end, who have done an outstanding job with this program and with this team in particular. This is just an outstanding group of girls. Not only are they leaders on the course, but they're also leaders within the building and within the classroom. They are true role models and great examples for their classmates, so that first and foremost means the most. Having said all of that, let's talk about their outstanding accomplishments during this cross-country season. The girls competed in eight invitationals across Oakland, La Conne, and La Pier counties and were undefeated. This was the first Oxford Middle This was the first Oxford Middle School team to win the Oakland County Championship as well as the MHSAA Regional Championship. Along with the Wildcats being victorious, these girls have developed a passion for the sport. They learned how to set goals, develop determination, have shown great sportsmanship, and they valued each other. The Wildcats look forward to another strong season in 2024 and we wish our eighth graders the best of luck in high school. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to them individually. We have Taryn Moore, Tatum Moore, Priya Motel, Blake Elling, Thea Reed, Ava Fox, Julia Warrington, Ari Bojennow, Tyler Boldy, and I think I already said Tatum Moore as well, very good. And how could I forget Ms. Sienna Chaitlin. Congratulations, girls.
Good evening, welcome. Thank you so much for coming this evening to the community. To the two most amazing seniors. Can you hear me now? So anyway, I said thank you for coming to our event this evening and recognizing all the names who are here in Ashford, but specifically our amazing seniors at Oxford Rivers High School. My name is Olita Cuffin, I'm in Olympia and I'm on the junior principal there. Tonight I'd like to recognize Jania Page and Isaiah Spezia for two great examples of what a smaller school can do for some students. And not everybody's made for a traditional large high school. And these two are shining example of that. They are not only successful academically, but I can count on them at any point to be helpful in anything that will be done as far as we have within our building. And I really appreciate what the two of you have done for us at Bridges High School. Thank you.
So good evening. Good evening from Team OVA, I'm Janice South, the principal. And I have Jam Rosick, our assistant principal of secondary instruction, and Mr. Doctor, Dr. Dennis, our assistant principal for elementary. We're super excited tonight to present three students, one for each grade level. So representing elementary is Evelyn Landman, and Mr. Dennis is going to talk about her.
Thank you. So OVA is an elementary school of 700 kiddos. And Evelyn Landman over here is an exceptional case of somebody who has made tremendous personal growth over the past year. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge her and acknowledge her accomplishments. So Evelyn Landman is a third grade hybrid student at Oxford Virtual Academy, who is being honored tonight for her personal growth in literacy over the past year. The continuous and consistent academic effort she shows each week is deserving of recognition and is acknowledged. Evelyn has diligently maintained a positive growth mindset, which has enabled her to make years of progress in the area of literacy in a very short amount of time. Her determination to learn and her positive contribution to the school's culture has not gone unnoticed by her teachers or by her peers. And Evelyn's been an always student with us since kindergarten. Her mentor teacher, Jen Himmels, who nominated her for this award, had the following to say. I've had the pleasure of being Evelyn's mentor teacher for two years and have witnessed tremendous growth, especially in literacy. From the beginning of second grade until now, Evelyn has been committed to improving her reading skills. Her determination and strong work ethic has been key factors in her success. She approaches every task with a positive attitude and enthusiasm. And always is eager to learn. Evelyn's growth and ability overcomes challenges and has been an inspirational journey that she should be incredibly proud of. Congratulations, Jen.
I have the pleasure of recognizing a middle school student, and I always say pretty in the middle time, but I love teaching middle school. So Ms. Jada Novak. So this is, she was nominated by Mrs. Darnell and her team at OVA and our partners at Falestine. So when first meeting Jada, we were drawn to her friendly demeanor. She is naturally kind and welcoming. As a student, she does not shy away from difficult tasks and she will ask for clarification when needed. In her social studies work, she uses her resources to support her work and is connected to reading and language arts to the learning in her science classes. Additionally, Jada is reflective in her work and makes decisions that serve her so that she can stay focused, like note-taking and content-heavy courses. She not only searches for new opportunities to grow in other areas of her life, she does so with purpose, knowing that one area of growth can strengthen another. She is funny and honest with her peers and her teachers and her principal. Jada is truly a pleasure to work with. Congratulations. I would also like to honor our high school students.
Hi, good evening. I have the great pleasure to honor James Dear Barry in this evening. He's our high school student at Oxford Virtual Academy who we are honoring this evening. Jimmy was nominated by more than one of his teachers, but one of his teachers had this to say about him. I have worked with Jimmy for two years and I have watched him grow as a reader, a writer, and thinker. When I look at our portrait of a graduate, Jimmy embodies so many of these qualities. He is knowledgeable and continues to seek out answers when he has questions about something. Jimmy's writing always shows deep thought and organization, and he always takes time to complete his coursework with great care. Jimmy is also principal. He leads with integrity, always making thoughtful choices for both himself and others around him. He takes responsibility for all of his actions and he is a leader in our school community. Furthermore, Jimmy is open-minded. He considers many viewpoints and understands that others do not always have the same view as he does. In classroom discussions, he is always kind and considerate to classmates, and he is always open to learning from them. Finally, Jimmy is caring. He demonstrates empathy through his interactions with classmates and teachers and through his written work. He works incredibly well with others and is a joy to work with in having him in the lab. I am beyond proud of Jimmy and all of his hard work. Congratulations to him.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stacey Beasley, I'm the principal of Oxford High School. And I'd just want you to know how proud we are at OHS of our students and we thank them. And we'd also like to thank and recognize our staff that works with them daily and also their families that have raised them, have done such a great job. On behalf of our administrative team, Kurt News, Kirsty Gibson-Marchal, Kevin Nows, and Tony Demar, I bring four students to you this evening who represent OHS in the area of academics, arts, and athletics. So this first group is our academic group. And I just want to let you know that last fall, in October, these students, we have now 75 students, take a test called the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, it's a PSAT. About 1.6 million students in the United States take this test. And at OHS, we came back this fall with recognition for nine of our students. And I would like to let you know a little bit about their accomplishments. So we have, on the very end, this is Avery Feeny, and we have Caitlin Ivory and Carol Teas Numias. The three of these students are recognized along with Mia Bella Miranda and Madison De La Rosa. They have been recognized by College Board by being the National Recognition Program awardees. And these girls earned this recognition by having a grade point average of over 3.5 as well as testing high on that test last October. Next I have Usenda Hazleton and also Holden Jones. These next two students along with Emily Haron, who can be with us tonight. These successful seniors have been recognized by College Board as National Merit Scholarship Commended Students. A very, very high honor. Three of our students were recognized for that. And finally, to my right here is Sean Wilson. Sean is Oxford High School's College Board National Merit Scholarship semifinalist this year. Sean scored Sean scored in the top 1% in the country to achieve this distinction of National Merit semifinalists. And he has completed a very long application process as well to be considered as a National Merit Scholarship finalist. We'll get those results in February. And in May then, we will know if Sean qualifies to be able to apply for the National Merit Scholarships to be one of 7,250 finalists. So lots of exciting things coming your way. Again, I present to you our students from OHS who have been done this as part of the area of academics. Next coming up is Benjamin Wheeler. Benjamin is a junior trombone player who represents Oxford as a member of the All-State Band. Ben had to practice and audition to be part of the All-State Band. There are about 100 trombonists who competed, and he is one of 10 to serve and has the honor of being in the All-State Band. He will practice with the rest of the state and perform at the Michigan Music Teachers Conference next semester. You will see Benjamin in all of the arts activities that we have at our school. And he's dressed like this because he has to run back over to the high school and join Audrey Corbett. Audrey is another one of our students who cannot be with us tonight. She's performing probably right now on stage. Audrey competed, or excuse me, she auditioned this fall to be part of the Detroit Symphony Orchestra, the Youth Ensemble. And so Audrey and Benjamin represent us in the area of arts. Congratulations. And last but not least, we have probably one of the most decorated athlete groups that Oxford High School has ever seen. We had 10 All-State athletes this year, and some of them are playing basketball right now back at the high school. Another one is at a concert this evening. But I'd like to introduce you first to a couple members of our girls' golf team. Ellie Culew, a senior, and Katie Pill, a sophomore, represented their team this year. They are both named All-State Honorable Mention, and they led their team to league championship and the first ever showing at the state tournament. You may have seen some social media posts about that. Ellie and Katie led their team, like I said, and Katie, being a sophomore, is left to carry the torch. There is a senior-heavy team this year, and we know that Katie will be a great person to do that. So there's our girls' golf team. Next from our boys soccer team, we actually had four student athletes that represented Oxford High School in the state. Diego happens to be the only one that is here with us this evening. Diego Madell, he was here last year with me for, you may remember him. This year, he's the All-State Dream Team. So in the state of Michigan, he is named one of the top. We are very proud of senior Diego. He also has behind him Jay Katie, a senior, who is All-State First Team, Nolan Mauser, a junior, and Cooper Kaufman, a senior. They were both All-State Third Team. Their team finished as league and district champions and had a really good run. And it was a fun fall to cheer for our boys soccer team. Congratulations. And seeing how Mr. Bigelow has introduced a girls' cross-country team, I think that we'll be seeing a little bit more of us in girls' cross-country and boys' cross-country teams. But next up is Mallory Bigelow. She is a junior, and she led her team this year to Oakland County League and Regional Championships. And Mallory was regional runner-up and was All-State as the 12th place runner at the state championships. Congratulations. For our boys cross-country team, he didn't with us tonight, but Alex McArthur is a junior as well. And he was All-State 30th in the state. And the boys cross-country team was really fun this year. They were Oakland County Champions as well, girls and boys teams. So Alex McArthur. And last but not least, I'm saying probably my favorite. I know I'm not supposed to say favorites, but I was a swimmer growing up and a swim and dive coach in my younger years. And so representing the girls' swim and dive team are Ellie Sider and Kristin Kredarski. These divers, again, you may have seen them in social media. Ellie, a senior, was a regional champion in All-State. She was second as a Division One state meet this year. And not far behind her, a couple of points, Kristin Kredarski, a junior. She was regional runner-up to Ellie and was All-State as the third place in the state. So last, it'll be a tough one. And just the same to my elementary counterparts, I know you all give me a hard time for this, but you choose. How would you choose one or two students to represent for the town? Congratulations.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item as we get into the business meeting. First up, we have scheduled public comment for agenda items only. So these are to address agenda items that are currently on the agenda. We have the table there. There'll be a three-minute timer. We did move the lights to the table, so it will show white. Then, and you get 30 seconds, it'll start flashing yellow, and then at that time it'll turn red when the 30 seconds are up. So we did have three requests for pre-arranged public comment, and the first one is Clay.
Can you guys hear me all right? Hello, everyone. My name is Clay Schilling, and on November 30th, while I hid in food for my life, my brother, Justin Schilling, was murdered in Oxford High School. I've not frequented these meetings, but the ones I have were frankly insulting. I do not wish to hear your empty words and void apologies. I want to see you all taking responsibility.
It had gotten to a point where I was getting sick at school, missing out on needed sleep. I pulled away from social events, from my friends, and yet, you still don't listen. You sit on your high horses, thinking this will all fizzle out, that we will give up. We won't. It's been two years, and we are still here, and we're still fighting. Just as our grief won't stop either. My brother's now empty room will never be filled again. I'll never hear his laugh, his voice. I'll never see him smile again. I'll never be able to pass by that sealed bathroom without my heart plummeting. I don't get to hug him. The last time I saw him, it was during a passing time in the hallways. A simple fist bump exchange, and that was it. That was my last memory of him. All of those things were taken away from me. And it's your fault, your staff's fault, the staff I was forced to listen to, to sit alongside as I struggled to breathe. Do you know how many times I had to hug Mr. Wolf or laugh with Ms. Pamela Fine? To pretend I'm not looking at the face of the people who failed me? My brother is dead because of you. It is your fault, your gross negligence, your fail to follow protocol, your lack of common sense, and yet, you are still seated here, and sure, you're hearing us, but God, you're not listening. A sorry doesn't cut it. Your condolences do not mean anything to me. You killed my brother, Tate, Madison, and Hannah. I hope it keeps you awake at night as much as it does for me.
Kayle Myers.
I just wanted to review quickly the origins of the contract, because I'm not sure a lot of people really are aware. The original contract was between your attorney and guidepost, and it had provisions in it that the guidepost was working for the attorney, that all of the communications were to the attorney, that the documents and all the information would be destroyed at the attorney's request, and the attorney would basically control who saw the report. And I have that report here. And, you know, the wording is kind of shocking to me as somebody who was told that the guidepost was an independent investigation and would be something for the community when actually, it was something quite different. It was for the insurance company to give you guys strategy on how to beat lawsuits. So the public found out, and there was an outcry. But the guidepost document, the contract, says it was effective of February of 2022, but it wasn't signed until May of 2022. I kind of like to know, like, how that happened? Like, it was predated? That's really confusing to me. I'd also like to know how it morphed from this document to what we received, right? Because it was never done in an open meeting, and we know that by law, all the decisions have to be made in an open meeting and a vote. There's no vote on the record for you guys to change the contract. So how did the contract get changed from what it was to what we have? And I think you owe the community an explanation on that, because it certainly is not reflected on the record. The guidepost report is missing a bunch of key elements, some very critical. For example, that the EOP review and vulnerability assessment was due at the time of the shooting. And had you done that, you probably would have realized all the things that you hadn't done. Maybe it would have saved lives. That's kind of a key factor. But beside all that, the report was not designed to really be factual and bring it all out, yet somehow, it morphed into being so. So with that being said, I hope that you use the report for what it is. It says that people failed to do their job. I hope you hold them responsible. You should have done it two years ago. You should have reviewed them two years ago. We know they failed. They're named. So use the report to remove the people from the district that need to be removed. Go through the process that you need to do to do it, and use that for what it is. I hope you do not try and discredit the report, right? I hope you use it for what it is. It really does speak for itself. So do the right thing.
Tonight, we will hear the district's response to the guidepost report. In advance of that response, I will share what I expect to hear from the board. I base this apology on the fact that I have read the entire report, as I am sure all of you did, in total horror and disbelief. I have read the forty-page listening session summaries, and I have followed this issue closely since the shooting. I made a moral commitment to my neighbor and my friend, Steve Saint Juliana, to advocate for Hannah, whom my family loved. And I have spoken out at considerable risk to myself. I have faced outright as well as subtle criticism and judgment, but the truth is, I would do this for any child in my neighborhood. And if you were my neighbor, I would do this for your child as well, if the neglect of a government entity led to their injury or death. Speaking out at these meetings is the foundation of American democracy, and I had wonderful government teachers. I have no plans to stop advocating for these victims, no matter how many times the faces sitting in front of me change. So here's your apology. Tonight, we express our regret for the preventable murders that happened at our high school. As a board, we take full responsibility for our failure to properly oversee our superintendent and understand his cabinet's qualifications and their roles and their responsibilities. We apologize for not prioritizing safety and having a robust EOP that included threat assessment plans and teams. We apologize for accepting money to develop threat assessment procedures and then not following through. We all watched the recent sentencing of the shooter, and we heard your pain and your stories. We hear all of you when you attend these meetings and speak. We apologize if you've ever been mistreated by a member of our board or the member of the district cabinet. Clay, we apologize to you for that. By admitting that our current... By admitting that our current threat assessment process would have caught the shooter quickly, we obviously admit that our processes were inadequate. We chose to ignore all the advice of our federal government to prevent targeted school violence before the shooting. We provided an open door to a troubled, angry, armed student who was dropping clues like breadcrumbs all over our building. We ignored the concern of our wonderful teachers. We completely failed, and the results are disastrous. And we also failed in the aftermath because we were devoid of any quality leadership at all. We allowed the lawyer for our insurance policy to tell us what to do as a board. This resulted in even more pain for the victims. We then brought in the wrong person to lead the trauma response. We did not meet the needs of our students. What we did was cruel, and we're sorry. I'm almost done. The days of not listening to our teachers when they report concerning behavior in this district are over. The days of sending a dangerous student back to class are over. The days of this board worshiping any superintendent are over. The days of Mullins making our decisions for us are over. We're done ignoring federal guidelines. The days of secrecy and protection are over. We are overwhelmed seeing the feedback from our parents and staff. Over the next two weeks, we're rolling out personnel changes and shifting resources to the schools where they're needed. We are reprioritizing violence prevention instead of hardening our schools so that something like the purchase of those six long gun safes will not further traumatize our families ever again. We will focus on repairing relationships. Reading a summary of the guidepost report will be mandatory for all district employees. We will host a statewide presentation explaining all the failings to other districts so they can learn. Again, we deeply apologize for the effect that these failures had on everyone affected. The pain is still there. The people most affected still struggle every day, and we will never minimize your pain. We will not tolerate further cruelty to these families. Finally, Oxford Community Schools, despite having the benefit of government immunity, takes full responsibility for failing to implement proper threat assessment procedures in our schools and acknowledges that the deaths of Hannah, Madison, Tate, and Justin were preventable, and we're so sorry.
Agenda item number five is the consent agenda. The minutes of the November 28th, 2023 special meeting, human resources update, and bills payable for November. Mary?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Markovich.
Thank you. We have two things tonight on the agenda. As you know, we had a... Can't hear me? Is that better? Yes? We had a false alarm in our middle school building last Friday. We've done extensive review of the incident, the cause, the aftermath, what we could do better, and our leader of Oakland Middle School, Brad, is going to give you the overview that was created after several debriefings. And I also want to say that we're confident that what caused this particular false alarm has been fixed. False alarms are false alarms, though. I don't know if we'll have any others, but this one's been fixed. Brad?
All right, thanks, Dr. Markovich. Good evening. My name is Brad Vigolo, I'm the principal at Oxford Middle School. As Dr. Markovich said, I'm here this evening to provide an overview of the false alarm that took place on Friday morning, December 1st, at the middle school. I'm going to share with you this evening a few key, I guess, a few key points. First of all, what caused the alarm. I'll give you a brief timeline of what occurred that morning. I'll also share with you our response, as well as what we have learned and next steps. I think before I get to that, though, I would like to share just a couple of things. I think, first of all, I want to reiterate just what was shared and some of the communications that already went out to our community, the Oxford Middle School community as well as the principal. I'm incredibly sorry that this occurred for our staff and students and for our community. The second thing, since the first, we've had two opportunities to debrief with our staff, and we've also had a formal staff meeting. I think it's important during these times to, when we sit down, we reflect, we talk about what went well, what we can do better, and then what potentially we can do next time. And I want to share with you, our great old teams got together and did this exercise. And when we got to the part about what went well, although they worked through this process independently, there was a common theme that really stood out to me, and I think it's one that's worth sharing, and that is how well our kids did. And that, I'm extremely proud of them. They're so courageous, very resilient, they're great students. And on top of that, I'm also incredibly proud of my staff, how well they performed that morning as well, being in those classrooms with our kids. As the principal, I feel extremely blessed to work at the middle school, be with those kids and those staff members each and every day. So having said all of that, bear with me as I kind of bounce back and forth here with the setup. All right, so what caused the alarm? At 8:31 a.m., a network switch that was previously unplugged by accident was plugged back into a different outlet. That outlet was located, it was located up high, higher on the wall, hopes that it will not be accidentally unplugged in the future. A component of the mass notification system was also plugged into the same circuit. A large power draw from the network switch, which normally occurs upon startup, caused a abnormal reaction and activated the alarm. The component that was adversely affected by the power draw has been completely disconnected, and a replacement has been ordered. Okay, breaking down the timeline of that morning. At 8:31, as we just saw, the network switch was properly plugged and was moved, totally hoping to be that more secure outlet. At approximately 8:31 and 55 seconds, it just so happened I was in my office. My office is located pretty close to that mass verification panel. So I ran out of my office. At 8:32 and 2 seconds, I was at the panel attempting to silence the alarm. I knew that it was a false alarm because I knew that the ID scanners were disabled. I knew that from a few days prior, so I knew that they were not operational, they were not functioning. So again, I knew that it was a false alarm. So at 8:32, about 2 seconds, I'm at the panel attempting to silence. Normally, our emergency panel is the same as our fire panel, so I've been through that process several times, I know how to silence it and reset it. In this case, I went through that process, and it tripped again, right? So at that point in time, I also wanted to communicate with our building that it was a false alarm too. So if you can picture simultaneously, I am attempting to silence the alarm, and then I'm also attempting to communicate with our building that this is a false alarm and we are safe. So you can see the timeline there. About 8:32 to 8:34, our SRO is communicating with the Oakland County Dispatch, law enforcement, as well as district personnel. Shortly thereafter, again, we had another office staff member who made another announcement, again, letting the building know that it was a false alarm. All right, continuing that morning, and I'll go back to this first point in terms of the incredible amount of support that we had throughout the course of that day. I'll speak to that, like I said, in a couple minutes here. We sent out three communications throughout the day on that Friday the 1st. The first hit 8:56. I sent out a follow-up at 10:41, and then a much more detailed email regarding the false alarm and what we had found for our investigation, was sent out to the community at 4:37. The following morning, Saturday the 2nd, our prepared team met. We actually met via Zoom, and we began planning a system of supports for our kids. We wanted to make sure we were prepared for them as they came back through the building on Monday morning, that we had a plan in place for them. I'll speak forward to that as well in a minute. And then finally, on December 3rd, I sent out an email communication to our middle school families detailing what they could expect for Monday when their students return back to school. Okay, I'm jumping back again to Friday the 1st. So the alarm, the false alarm, had sounded immediately. Our staff, administration, counselors, security personnel, we were in hallways going out to the building, really just fulfilling any need that might arise, whether it be a student that needed something, a staff member, regardless, we wanted to make sure that we were there to support in any capacity. Mental health professionals ran support groups throughout the day, helping students both individually and in small groups. That also included staff members from other buildings. We had representation from across the district. We had individuals come over from central office. We had mental health professionals come from some of our elementary buildings. It was a total team effort, and I'm extremely grateful for that. Our therapy dogs were on site. We had additional safety personnel come over. While that was occurring, our tech team was investigating the cause of the alarm. While that was occurring, our tech team was investigating the cause of the alarm. Fast forward to Monday the 4th. We had planned, and this was part of that December 2nd planning session with our team, we were planning, we planned a restorative circle lesson during first hour, which was to be facilitated by our staff. We learned to be during first hour because we felt it was important for our students to be with their teacher that they were with from that previous Friday the 1st when the false alarm occurred. So that's why we did it during first hour. We kept our morning routine very the same. So students came in, checked in, we had advisory, we had their breakfast, and then we had first hour, and that's where we had our restorative circle lesson. One of the key pieces to that lesson was we had each of our students call out an accident slip. We provided them with a QR code. They'd use their phone, they could use their Chromebook, and basically we wanted to know what needs they had at that time. It's pretty simple. We gave them a scale of 1 to 3, a 1 being I am comfortable, I am good, I don't need any additional support. A 2 meant I'm feeling slightly nervous, I would like to connect with somebody this week. A 3 meant I am very nervous, I'd like to connect with somebody today. We had 685 students who identified that they were, at that time, were 1. We had 122 students who were a 2, and we had 26 students who were a 3. So our mental health team, that involved 26 of those students that day, on Monday the 4th, the remaining 122 students were met with throughout the course of the week. So an outstanding job by our mental health team. All right, so what we have learned and some next steps. So following our ALICE protocols, we had, obviously, we utilized our night locks, heard some great stories from some teachers, from some very courageous kids, who in that short amount of time, going back thinking about our timeline, who, thinking about their training, began barricading. We also had a couple of classrooms that evacuated. I think it's important to know, when you think about ALICE, you see that key, you might think of evacuation as the last resort. Through our training, we have learned that if you are able to evacuate, you evacuate. And these two classrooms, based on their location within the building, and based on the informed piece, the message they were hearing, stating there was something going on in the building, they got out. They did not have to go back into the hallway at all. Again, based on their location within the building, they were able to exit out from their classrooms out to the sidewalk area. We also learned that our PA system needs some work in the gym. That is something that we are already addressing. We are on it. The PA system does work, however, it is muffled. So we will be working on that. Throughout this process also, we have done another night lock inventory, as well as a night lock shade inventory. Again, that is something that we immediately began to address. Most of the night locks that we currently are in need of, there's a couple of small offices in the media center that we're addressing. There is an office space in between our music and our band rooms. We're going to be addressing that. And then there, in our 6th grade group hallway, there's a copy room. So we'll be adding night locks there. We found that we need to review plans with students from uncommon places. And then also, we want to discuss looking at our window situation at the middle school. Currently, especially given that media center before, all of those windows are on glass. Currently, there isn't like a screen with a, you can properly window open. That's also the same on the upstairs level as well. Through the ALICE training, it does teach you how to break a window and how to do it properly, but again, this is something that we do want to look at. Okay, next steps. We do an advisory lesson at the beginning of the year in September, which reviews our ALICE protocols with our kids. That also includes having each of our students practice the night lock. Feeling extremely beneficial to go through that process again with our, with our students. We're looking at doing that after the 1st of the year. Then again, having a lesson that emphasizes a conversation about steps to take for those uncommon places. And I'm talking about our cafeteria, so our commons area, hallways, bathrooms, we need to have those conversations with our students. So we will be doing that. As well as our gym, I've had a lot of conversation with our PE teachers, just about their, their plans and their best course of action, just because of the location and how big that gym is. And also, last but certainly not least, the plan for our next drill, again, is not imminent. That will be at some point here this second semester, really thinking through being intentional and strategic with our mass notification rollout. So training for our staff, training for our kids. The beginning of the year, we always send out to our parents, like our slides essentially that we share with our students during advisory, a couple of days in advance before doing that drill. We'll be doing something similar in this case as well with our mass notification system. Also, making sure that we all understand where our drop-down ID scanners are located throughout the building. Again, these sound like little things, but super important, just providing plenty of lead time before the drill. Usually before a drill, I'll make an announcement several days in advance, just giving our kids a heads up, like, you know what's coming, just to mentally prepare, making sure we're communicating with our parents, keeping them in the loop, making sure we have mental health supports in place if any of our kids need, need support. And then that last piece, I know I jumped over it, but one of the things we're evaluating is the mass notification message itself, what it specifically states, whose voice is on it. That's something that we're wanting to... So that's all I have for you this evening. I didn't know if there's any questions?
I have a comment. Brad, I just wanted to let you know, I don't know if you can hear me. I got some feedback about how well your staff did and how they just jumped right in and everybody worked as a well-oiled machine and took great care of your kids. So I just wanted to let you know, and if you pass that along to your staff.
I will, for sure. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So total team effort across the board, regardless of all, staff, staff members and our kids.
Brad, I know we talked about, but you say the card reader had been unplugged. Have we looked into secure outlets? I know that was touched on. I don't know if you have an update on that.
I currently don't have an update, but I know that that's been...
Allison seems to have an update.
So it wasn't the card reader that was unplugged, it ended up being a set of our cameras that got unplugged. And so when our security staff got into the building first thing and they pulled up their cameras and they get ready for their day, they noticed that, so then they alerted the building that it was the cameras that came unplugged, and then they got put to a different location, which then short-circuited the panel that the card readers were attached to. And yes, Sasha's already working on an idea that he has that does involve secure plugs.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Maybe, sure. We, we talked, I know you touched on change mass notification message. We had touched on as far as somehow getting a text message outright to the group. Is that what that's touching on, or is that a difference, and where are we on that?
Yes, and. So it's kind of an old situation. One is, right now, the way of the message is, we want to make sure that it's very clear that they have to enter ALICE protocol, that informed piece, and making sure that we're still being respectful of the needs of our community, but using clear language. So guidance we had gotten before was to use principals' voices from the building, but then as we met with the staff after, as part of a debrief outside of our after-action we did with the ICS team, was that they would have preferred a different voice, more robotic, so to say, just to make it clear that when the ALICE protocol is being enacted, it's one voice, and then Brad gets on the PA system, or whatever principal would get on the PA system, they know that's Mr. Vigolo, listen to that, and it's not two competing voices. And so that, that's the type of message that we're looking at, as well as from that communication piece, being able to communicate quicker to our, our families and our district team.
Please.
Any other questions?
I just, I just want to say again, of course, we're very sorry that it happened, right? In the ideal world, it would, it would not have happened, but I have to commend, I wanted Brad to give you the entire chapter and verse of how this building responded and what this building has done and how this building is making use of the experience, from students to staff to, to everybody, because I, I think it's an example of how serious we take this and how we use every experience to try to get to the next level of safety. So thank you, Brad, and thank you to your staff.
All right. Thanks again. As a mom of two middle school students, I do appreciate that a lot, so. All right. So the next item on your superintendent is the guidepost response.
Right. We'll put it up on the screen and, until it gets up there, as an introduction, as you know, the, the Oxford School Board hired Guidepost Solutions through the Investigative Council of Arnim to jointly conduct an investigation that would address concerns and questions following November 30, 2021 tragedy. It was structured so that decision-making and the investigation process was independent of the board and district personnel. There were two reports generated. Report number one was issued May 8th, 2023. It was about school safety, security policies, guidelines, practices, and measures in place at the time of the report. The second report was released October 30, 2023, and that investigated what occurred just prior, during, and just after the tragedy on November 30, 2021. We informed the Oxford community that we would take certain actions based on the observations made by Guidepost and...
Can't hear it.
You still can't hear it? I have it as loud as it will go. Pardon? Closer to my mouth? Is that better? Okay. Thank you. With report number one, we created actions, we put actions in place. Those actions are now incorporated in our ongoing recovery plan, and we will do the same with actions that were, came about because of report number two. As always, our ultimate goal is to do everything possible to learn from the tragedy and for our district and our personnel to remain committed to creating a safe, more secure, and supportive learning environment. The report is, as you know, the report was dense. It was 572 pages, so of course, the response is dense as well. And do I have somebody who's... Oh, Allison, click please. Thank you. So we've put it in this format. There were topics from the Guidepost report, and we went through the report topic by topic for those topics where they indicated some improvement would be advisable. The middle column is what is our current practice. Those of you who are familiar with report number one and with our recovery plan know that the district has been working on a lot of these things for the last year plus, and so many things are already in place that are different than what was in place prior. Also, in the third column, we have plans to continue to improve our current status as we move forward. So the first topic is board oversight. And through the policy committee, our current practice, given what we have learned, is that our policy committee works with the superintendent and other administrators, and they update policies regularly. We have updated all of 2022 and all of 2023 that we have received so far, and we are getting ready to do the February 24 update. We partner with Neola, which is a policy updating service. They bring us the proposed updates, especially those that have legal requirements that need to be updated too. The superintendent works with the board policy committee, and the board policy committee then brings the recommendations for those changes and/or new policies to the board as a whole, and the board then votes on the policy updates. The superintendent and board assistant, Angela, is the primary gatekeeper for how these policies come through the process. It is part of the superintendent's contract, as well as board policy, as well as the evaluation tool used to evaluate me, to determine whether or not the superintendent has been proactive in determining district needs and policy priorities, and whether the superintendent has a system in place to ensure timely administration of district policies. Where we hope to bring additional oversight and additional progress to policies, beginning this school year, the board is auditing all current policies, they're reviewing policies that come from other service agencies besides just Neola, and the policy committee will be looking at whether or not we need to change either service agencies or change structure and process in terms of policy development and updating. Certainly, after the new superintendent is hired and during the 24-25 school year, the board policy committee will work with the new superintendent on a plan to manage and monitor the implementation of board policies. Beyond next school year, the board is also going to ensure that any new board members are oriented to their role in policy development and management through training from the Michigan Association of School Boards, as well as sitting Oxford School Board members. That is board oversight. Staying with board policies, there were also observations made related to policy implementation and monitoring. As I said before, this is in the superintendent's contract, part of the superintendent's evaluation, but the superintendent is also going to report biannually to the board on the implementation and compliance with critical policies, such as threat and suicide assessments and protocols. And these reports to the board have already begun, and most of the data we get comes from Navigate 360 on those two. In addition, the executive director of school safety oversees threat and suicide assessments for the districts, facilitates the training, monitors the policy implementation, and works with buildings on a monthly basis as every school team reviews every month how they have used data, how they have made decisions, how they have called threat assessments into place, and what has happened with them. So it's a monthly review. Going forward, we are going to discuss board policy and administration guidelines, and we're going to update them from things that we learn during BTAM meetings, principal meetings, and we're going to take any changes back to BTAM teams and principal meetings as they are developed, again, using Navigate 360 as our data source. Continuing even further with policies, once the board adopts a policy, the district administration is going to complete the administrative guideline for that policy, should one be required, and any forms or protocols that accompany that administrative guideline. These are then posted in the board book, as well as online, and then district administrators and building principals are informed of any new policy or administrative guideline. Each administrator is responsible to see that actions taken within their building or department comply with the policies and the guidelines. Currently, as I said, the superintendent's job description clearly states that the superintendent will oversee this implementation. The superintendent will assign relevant policies and guidelines to cabinet members to further oversee their departments relating to specific policies that those departments may have to administer. Moving forward, we're going to more frequently have regular, ongoing opportunities for all of our administrative teams to review policies and administrative guidelines throughout the year. Also, when it is determined that a policy has not been followed, training and additional supervisory oversight will be provided as needed. And then finally, in terms of policy and administrative guideline review, it was noted that although there were 26 policies identified for staff to review and acknowledge and sign off on, that threat assessment and suicide assessment were not part of that 26, that has been added to the 26 that need to be reviewed and acknowledged. Going forward, we're going to review all the policies during our audit to determine if there's any others that need to be added to this group, and if so, we will add them. In addition, staff has said to us, can you give us hard copy of these critical policies, as well as online, because we would like to refer to them through hard copy, and we will begin doing that in the 24-25 school year. The next topic... will begin doing that in the 24-25 school year. The next topic is training. And we have, it's a long list in this, in this middle column for training, because we've put a lot of focus on increasing training. So, I'll go through it briefly. We have online training that every staff member, every contractor, every substitute teacher has to complete their vector trainings. They cover threat assessment, suicide awareness, mandated reporting, bullying, along with state-required trainings on bloodborne pathogens, Title IX, harassment, et cetera. Assessments are given after every training, and a passing score must be earned before that training is considered complete. We also do training in person, especially in the area of threat and suicide risk assessment, because those policies were new last year. And there is a learning curve, and we want to make sure that we have everybody being trained. So, there is initial training of Behavior Threat Assessment Management Teams. That's what BTAM is throughout this document. We also have Columbia Lighthouse Project Trainings, which is a self-paced training program. We have identified leads at the district and campus levels who are resource people that other campus people may go to. We also have communication and consultation with our safety departments on cases as needed. And as I said before, those BTAM meetings are monthly in every building. The applicable policies and administrative guidelines are routinely referenced and read during these Behavior Threat Assessment Management Team meetings, and training on both threat and suicide assessment screeners have been put into play, as well as for full assessments, especially in the area of understanding our policy's definition of low threshold to conduct an assessment. This, these are opportunities for staff to really define, understand, and better develop what that low threshold means and what cases go on for full threat assessment. If there are any changes that are ever going to be put in place around suicide or threat assessment, they will go through the Executive Director of School Safety, who will put those changes through all of the levels of training that I have just reviewed. In addition, because of our monthly meetings at meetings and our monthly conversations with staff member, we will be bringing the Board, within the next month or so, a new suicide policy, even though you just adopted one last year, because we have added an entire process for screening prior to full assessments, and will need to amend our policies to incorporate that. We have, so, the district's threat and suicide risk assessment policies, practices, and protocols, there's a couple of things that are in there now that were observations by Guide Post. For instance, we have multidisciplinary teams for threat assessments. It includes at least one school administrator, at least one school-based mental health professional, and the SRO. That is the minimum group that can decide whether a threat assessment goes on or not, or carries through a threat assessment. For suicide risk assessments, we have at least one school administrator. We are now calling for two school-based mental health professionals and the SRO, and this will be the minimum number of people required to not only check for access to lethal weapons, dangerous instrumentalities. This is also the group that's going to decide if the assessment goes from screening to full assessment. The screening process is, is new. It's very thorough. It requires, it has been taken from several different models of best practices. And when I say mental health professionals, we mean master's level. That would be for both the suicide and the risk assessment. In terms of going forward, we're, this is, this, these two policies are at the top of the radar all the time. We're going to continue to look, continue to search, continue to check our practices against best practices. Okay, the Emergency Operation Plan was another topic. In terms of history, the 2019 EOP was approved and updated as follows. And these are things that Allison was able to pull from records in the district. The 2019 EOP was approved by the Board at the December 5, 2019 Board Meeting. It was updated in the MEGS system. That's a Michigan education governmental system where you file all of these kinds of reports. It was updated in MEGS on December 16, 2019. It was not updated in MEGS again until February 23, 2022, and it was amended and filed again in March, on March 22, 2022. The current EOP was updated and reviewed by the District Safety Committee, as well as the Parent Subcommittee, on April 5, 2023, brought to the Board during its closed session on April 11, 2023, and approved by the Board on April 25, 2023. This has already been updated then in MEGS in May, 2023. It included all building vulnerability assessments. It was, those were conducted by the Executive Director of School Safety and the School Safety Administrator using a tool called SISA. There was a memorandum of understanding put in place between all businesses and Oxford Community Schools that were being used as reunification locations. Those signed MOUs are in the EOP's, current EOP. We have backup personnel assigned for continuous VSS camera operation in order to better meet the inform updates as part of Alice protocol. Buildings have assigned Alice duties to specific staff members. This is outlined in the EOP and in the building manuals. Drills are occurring this year to include situations both inside the school, as well as external to the school. Each building has their own emergency front office number and stickers on phones that indicate what numbers can be used if the front office needs to be called. And the front, if the front office is compromised in an emergency, notification automatically goes to the District ICS team, as well as alerts over the radio. The EOP going forward is going to be updated, strengthened, and refined annually. It's already been reviewed several times by the District Safety Committee and the Parent Subcommittee for Safety. It will be brought to the Board when there is any significant update in closed session. If the Board should have to approve it again, it is typically approved every other year. And of course, building vulnerability evaluations will be amended to include eight assessment tools that we've added to the original vulnerability assessments. Student searches for weapons. A student, first of all, you have to understand that it is under the Fourth Amendment, a student cannot be searched absent a reasonable suspicion of searching for something. Given that, however, checking for lethal weapons is part of the threat assessment screener. This may include the SRO checking for registered weapons with both the parents, caregivers, and questioning the student about access to lethal weapons. Within the full threat assessment, there are multiply, multiple required components where the team has to answer whether the student has access to lethal weapons, or the process has stalled and they can't move forward. Checking for dangerous instrumentalities, including lethal weapons, as part of the suicide risk assessment screener, is also in place. This is a required component, not only of the screener, but again, of the full suicide risk assessment. They have to inquire not only about student access, but they have to determine if there's dangerous instrumentality on or near the student. We're going to continue going forward to stay up to date. We're going to check federal and state requirements relative to student searches and make sure that we are in compliance with what we need to be, as well as having the utmost safety and security around weapons checking. There was a topic called armed security and SRO presence in Oxford Buildings. Currently, armed personnel include SROs, school safety administrators, security specialists, and third-party contracted security personnel who have clear expectations and responsibilities around carrying firearms. No other employees are permitted to be armed while in the building. The SROs and security specialists cannot be off-campus at the same time. If the SRO has to leave a campus for any reason, the security specialist is required to stay at the school. The school safety administrator is a backfill as needed should any of these two requirements, for some reason, not be able to be adhered to. We also have third-party contract security with at least one armed security person at every campus, including all elementary buildings. Should one of them be absent, the contracting firm sends a replacement, and if that is not possible, the school safety administrator backfills as needed at the elementary level. Alice was a topic of concern. Currently, each building is responsible for assigning specific responsibilities within the Alice protocol. Each building has a crisis team, and that crisis team identifies people with backups to be on cameras at all times during an emergency. At the high school, two staff are assigned to camera coverage, and there is one central office backup should either of them be out of the building. At the middle and elementary buildings, there is one person assigned to camera coverage. One backup person is housed at the high school with full access to other building cameras, and one backup is at the central office. There is ongoing training on the camera systems for those identified as being responsible. In addition, there's training protocols for internal and external threats, as I said before. Scripts, as you heard Brad mention in, in his review of our false alarm, scripts are being developed in, so that we will be consistent in PA announcements, threat alerts, and Alice protocol alerts. Moving forward, we're going to continue the training and regular practice on navigating the cameras. We're going to continue the training and information on Alice. We are also investigating, however, third-party providers for camera monitoring, and also looking at AI overlays to the camera system we have, which would enhance camera monitoring, as well as AI programs to assist with weapons detection, facial recognition, and crowd control. The school safety administrator will work with the Subcommittee to revise the Alice training videos. We also have our student advisory group at the high school. I didn't put this in the report. I should have. We have our student advisory group at the high school who has suggested to us that we let the 11th and 12th grade students make the night lock videos for the 9th through 12th grade students to watch and be trained by, because they have assured us their videos will be more interesting than ours. And so, Dr. Willman and Ms. Beasley will work with those students, and we hope to have those videos available to our kids this spring. As well, Navigate 360 and Alice are going to have new training videos for staff, because there are improvements that could be made in the, in the, in the video training. PA and lockdown alert systems. Our mass notification system is installed with visual and audio alert mechanisms in all of our buildings. As you heard from Mr. Bigelow's earlier presentation, we are rolling this out. At this point, we are not using the card reader system, which is what created the, the false alarm. We are also not using audio scripts, because we are still developing those things, and also because we want to prepare students, we want to prepare staff, and we want to alert parents at each moment that we roll out a new segment of the mass notification system. No more false alarms, if we can help it. We have also included in our training for Alice the bathroom and courtyard instructions that were not there in the earlier training protocols. Parent involvement in threat and suicide assessments. This referred to, this was the reference to Guide Post noting that there were, the parents on that incident did not take the student out of the school when they had been asked to, and it left us with a question of what do we do if we're a school and parents refuse to take a student home that we believe needs to, to leave. At this point, if a student remains suspicious and the parent is refusing to take them home, that student will remain with an adult in the school building with, for the rest of the school day. If they continue to be a concern to us, a threat to self-or others, and the parents continue to be unavailable or cooperative in getting the student recommended help or getting them home, we're going to have to engage with first responders to make the determination on what might be the best placement. There's liability issues related to this, and so, we're going to, moving forward, we're going to work with law enforcement. We may even work with the legislature in terms of trying to develop processes, procedures, helps that schools can put in place when, when, if and when this should ever happen again. Doesn't happen often. Our parents are, for the most part, very responsible, but when it does happen, the school is left with a great deal of liability and not much direction on where to go with it. So, we're going to pursue that. Review of social media during threat assessments and suicide assessments. The Executive Director of School Safety and many, many, many of our technology people, as well as many people from our BMAT teams, our digital teams, they're all going through training, learning how to better apply the principles of threat assessments to digital threat assessment, assessments, digital, assessing digitally, threat assessment platforms. Okay. You can read in here, I cannot answer any questions about that, but they use Boolean operators. They use people's search engines. They access all kinds of data that's been accumulated. They try to validate sources of images and videos, and they're being trained to look at all of these kinds of things. So that as, when we're doing a threat assessment, part of the data collection process will be to look at a student's social media presence and incorporate that into the threat assessment evaluation. We have always, I mean, we have, we are currently doing, and we have people already trained, to monitor student online behavior as far as GoGuardian, Beacon, Gaggle. These are when kids are on our devices, on our networks, and we're already screening those all the time for concerning words, concerning topics, that are then brought to our, our Gaggle Google Teams. Those teams are paid as stipend. They are on alert 7:24. They rotate week by week, so they have a week on and a week off, and we are able to get these alerts at 2:00 a.m. on Sunday, on Saturday, as well as during the course of the day. And then, of course, as we get them, we, we act on them. We're going to continue to use Gaggle and GoGuardian. We're going to continue to strengthen and refine the practices on adapting technology, and we're going to continue training on how we peruse external social media. Sabers. That was also a topic. Sabers is a data point that is reviewed by all threat assessment and suicide assessment teams currently. And that review is also entered into the Navigate 360 database. Now, Sabers results alone do not equate to running a threat assessment, but it certainly informs the threat assessment team of another aspect of the student's performance and situation. How do we use Subers data and the multi-tiered system of support? We, in, the multi-tiered system of support is intended to monitor both academic and behavioral health through frequent check-ins and multiple data points, reading, math, attendance, Sabers, Power School, survey student takes, students' take, behavioral discipline records, et cetera. From these data points, interventions and supports are planned and implemented. The multi-tiered system of support includes academic and behavioral interventions. You've heard of many of them, PBIS, restorative practices, bully prevention. Those are all going to continue. Where we are trying to expand our support is to make sure that we have adequate support at the Tier 1 level, which is a level being implemented by every staff person and teacher in the district. Also, that we have adequate support at the Tier 2 level, and that Tier 2 level is a level where students just need more than what is coming across in, in the general ed classroom. That may be small group counseling. It may be check-ins with a certain teacher or staff member or counselor. It may be additional SEL lessons. It may be cognitive behavioral intervention for trauma in schools, which is something we're, we're bringing into our schools. we're bringing into our schools. It could be a whole assortment of things. And then, of course, at tier-three, our students are also, parents and students would be involved. There would also be third-party referrals because tier-three would, of course, be more serious problems. Student reporting. The district continues to make okay-to-say, see something, say something lessons in advisory, at the secondary level, in advisory classes, elementary level, in regular classes. Our building and our staff continue to try to reinforce to students and to all stakeholders, including themselves, see something, say something. We have several different avenues for reporting are provided to the students at all the buildings. Grade-level meetings are held during the first week of school. Expectations are shared again around reporting concerning behavior. Class meetings that were held between 2017 and 2022 involved Judge Judy Nicholson, where she discussed destructive decisions. This included expectations for students to help keep buildings and others safe by reporting to teachers, counselors, and administrators. Not enough is done. We're going to continue to encourage, 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 and make sure that people know and make sure we can give people comfortable ways to report, whether it be confidentially, anonymously, or in person. Staff awareness is also going to be a continued effort on this. The Pre-Pan Plan Live system was a topic mentioned by Guidepost. We no longer use that system. It did not deliver what the district needed. We have replaced it with the Edwards Mass Notification System, and we're also, as I said before, currently looking at AI applications that will overlay the systems we have in place and give us not only more information from the eyes we have, but better functionality in terms of weapons detection. Night locks was another topic. We have night locks, and our recent, most recent unplanned test at the middle school showed night locks were used not only well, but it also showed us where, in a certain remote locations like offices and storage rooms, where we needed to put more night locks. We're going to continue to practice them. We're going to continue rolling it out across the school district. Our substitutes and volunteers are going to be trained earlier and frequently throughout the year in terms of using them as well, and we're going to continue to review and refine practices. Also, the safety department has purchased removal, removal tools. This is, in the event a room is night locked that shouldn't be by who knows who, that we have to have a way of getting into that room. So we have night lock removal tools. We're putting them in more places throughout our building, but they will be secured, they will be locked, and only trained designated staff will be able to use them. But just in case anyone was thinking about locking themselves into a room with a night lock, it won't work going forward. Power School and student documentation. This is a big challenge for us. We are continually trying to refine and strengthen how we document our practices. We have multiple tools for documentation. That's a good thing on one hand, but it's a challenge on the other of how you bring these multiple tools into one warehouse so that when you are doing a suicide or a threat assessment, you can go to a single source. So we're working on that. But in order to have that single source be really powerful, we need to make sure that any, every individual source is also powerful. So our Department of Security is working with our mental health professionals and teachers to help review the process of what are we putting in Power School? How are we documenting it, including the counseling logs? And what input is currently being collected? And who is currently reviewing that? So that's an ongoing. We've started it this year. We're going to continue it throughout this year and probably going forward. Safety drills, including those for active shooter situations, are conducted as required by the state of Michigan. We're going to continue to conduct those in our particular district. We're going to continue to be very sensitive to using trauma-informed approaches as we move those forward. We also have to prepare our students and staff, as I mentioned before, for the mass notification system as we roll out additional layers of that system. Trauma-informed support, and this is the last section, so. There's a lot that's been going on in trauma district support. When the tragedy happened, the district did not have any internal trauma experts, and so experts were brought in external to the district. It took four months for the Department of Justice to get here. One of the things we want to do going forward is work with the state and work with federal agencies to determine how could, how could we ensure that they get to a district sooner should this happen elsewhere? So we're going to be working on that. In terms of our own, where we've come, since we have had expert advice and we have had a recovery team come to our schools, and we've been working with the federal, state, and local support systems, we've created a wellness department to support mental and behavioral health needs of students, families, and staff. We've added the following programs, the Student Mental Health Wellness Program. A lot of community partnerships are helping us provide that. We have a social-emotional curriculum. We have the multi-tiered system of support framework. We now have additional guidance counselors, additional family-school liaison services. We continue the monitoring of students' Gaggle and other online social media. We are redeveloping our crisis teams to use the Prepare Crisis Response Model, which is being very well received in our schools, and that training continues to be rolled out. We have bully prevention and restorative practices at a level much higher now than it was before. The board last year did a lot of work on bully policies, guidelines, protocols, forms, et cetera. We have the Oxford Wildcat PAC, and we also have a lot of community partners that are always, that are named on our website and as well as in here, but I won't go over them. We're going to look at the trauma-informed toolkit that comes from the Department of Justice. Actually, we've been looking at it, and one of the things we're going to be working on for second semester is to administer a self-assessment throughout our district to see where we're meeting trauma-informed standards and where we have work yet to be done. And we're going to be working with Mary Vale and Victims of Crime Training and Technical Assistance in order to do that. We're also going to expand and align initiatives in PBIS, social-emotional learning, restorative practices, et cetera, in order to have more interventions and to have interventions more consistently applied in the multi-tiered system of support. We've developed Parent University, and we're trying to bring parents and community members a range of educational opportunities that focus on many of the things I've named in this response, many of the things that are in our recovery plan, many of the things that are in our academic programming goals. So we try to focus on academic parenting, suicide prevention, BTAM, bully prevention, self-care wellness, et cetera. We're going to continue to explore how we can increase parent engagement and participation in these parent universities. The rest of the document is, as I mentioned to you before and what I brought to you before, are all of the input we got through questions, suggestions, and things we ought to keep doing from our 14 listening sessions that we held the week, week or two after the Guidepost report was published. As you go through these questions and as you go through some of the suggestions, you'll see that probably about 80 to 85%, I don't have the total tally with me, are answered within our response. So we said to people, we need, we need to have you tell us what you want us to focus on and what you want us to look at, and, and we did. Where it impacted, where it related to the topics that are listed on the left column of what I just went through. And that's the report. Before I make any further statements, do we have questions on the report or the contents within the report from the board?
I do have some questions. So going back into the policy implementation, can you explain a little bit better the process in there as far as, you said that certain administrators would be responsible for district policies that would be broken up like that. Is that something that they are tested yearly on to, for knowledge? Is it part of the review? Can you just explain that a little bit better?
Well, depending on the cabinet member, for instance, Sam Barner would be finance. So his primary responsibility would be to see that the implementation of the finance policies were going as they are. Dr. Willman is in charge of suicide threat assessments, so those would be assigned to her. So cabinet members, all the instructional curriculum would be Anita and Steve. So given their role, there are certain policies that just fit their role. Certain policies override everybody's role, and so those are policies that everybody has to be aware of. In our job descriptions, in our assignments, and as part of our annual evaluations, that policy implementation will be addressed.
Okay. And could you explain to me a little bit better, when you said that, well, when the report said, when they do drills and someone is manning the cameras, there's a backup person, but for the elementary and the middle schools, that backup person appears to be out of the building?
They are off-site, yes.
Okay. So how, how is the inform component of Alice?
They're monitoring the cameras, and they're in communication with the building.
Through radio?
At the same time. Is it through radio? Allison, is it through radio?
Right now, it's radio as we're updating our PA system.
Okay. And so the backup person in charge of the cameras at that point would have access to the PA or not? How, what's the chain?
It depends on where they are. So like, I have access to all.
Do you have a microphone?
Very much a situation-dependent. So I'd love to give you a clear answer, but I can't. I'll say, for example, I have access to all the cameras, and I will be responding to whatever is going on. But that's why we have a primary and a secondary person on each campus, as well as someone else, two other people off-site in addition to myself. But as I am the incident commander, I wouldn't be the camera person necessarily, but I'm almost the five- or most deep backup if necessary.
So when someone is manning a camera off-site, are they in radio contact with the building?
Right now, yes. It is through radio.
So they would be radioing to that building to make the announcement as part of the inform? So they wouldn't have that ability? It's communicated?
Radio.
Okay.
Now, remember, we're investigating an AI system, and we're investigating other camera overlays to determine if we can, if we can put something in place that is more efficient backup at the building level. But for now, this is what we have in place.
Okay.
And also, we're talking about the first person assigned and the second person assigned aren't able to perform their job at that point.
Well, for elementary and middle, can you, they have two onsite?
Onsite.
And then one backup off-site?
There's two off-site, actually. So there's two onsite, and then there's two off-site.
Okay. All right. And I guess while you're up here, I'll go on to next safety-related, which would be for you. So the OMS incident highlighted some gaps, such as, you know, the gym wasn't loud enough. Have there been audits of the elementary schools and other buildings since then to determine if they have the same gaps? And the same question goes for the outlet that was tripped. The safeguards, have we looked at the other schools now because of OMS to fix?
So the mass notification system also functioned as a PA system. Sach and I have a meeting tomorrow with Eagle to kind of let them do their internal testing to notify that with that. Our PA systems across the district, we agree about it, which was part of that mass notification system, and the addition of the Edwards Mass Notification System was to create that ability to do the PA system. It wasn't because the, it was unplugged. It was a faulty panel that caused the problem. And so that's part of, Eagle has gone around. They started at 3:00 in the morning, because they're doing it when students and staff aren't on campus. So they started at 3:00 in the morning testing the middle school and the high school last Friday, and then they started at 4:00 in the morning on Saturday to ensure that staff and students weren't there, but to be able to perform their own audit. But that is part of our ability and vulnerability assessments that I will go into with Principal.
Thank you. Same question for the night locks. You found that in OMS, there were some closets, some areas that needed maybe night locks. Where are we at in the process for all other buildings?
We just placed a pretty big order. Actually, it's already been placed, and they're in place, and I just got the notification to approve the bill. So it's just that continuous walking ability to making sure things like small offices where people tend not to be, can easily be overlooked if it's not occupied at the time that those assessments are done. So that's something combined with my security department that as we go through with principals, being vigilant of what, where we need them.
Thank you. A couple things that I just wanted to ask, I guess, Vicky maybe, since Heather is not here, based on the listening sessions and things that were in there, do we have an update on Guidepost? Is there, have they had communication with us as far as an addendum? Do we know the status of that?
They've not communicated with us. I did not have very many things turned in to me. I don't know what's been turned in to Guidepost.
Okay. Couple things also. How often is mandated reporter training? That was a question that was in there.
We, we have it at the beginning of the year, this year. It's new this year. So we did it, all employees had to do it at the beginning of the year. New employees do it within a couple of weeks of them coming in, and that's the vector training online. Now, there is also supposed to be at staff meetings and BTAM meetings and other things. Mandated reporting is also one of those critical elements that infuses in a lot of other things that they'll be talked about, but the online training is once a year.
And to add to that, sorry. Our last tabletop that we did with our last round of BTAM meetings did include a component where ideally the team would have said, we need to call CPS over this, and 100% of the cameras did reach that conclusion. So it is embedded as part of our tabletop exercises.
I'll let someone else take a turn. Any other questions, sir?
All right. So I think from a general perspective of the board, and I hope that I'm speaking for the majority of everyone, as a learning organization, we know how important it is to continue to use the report and the feedback we got from the community sessions to improve our practices, our policies, our training, and our support to our staff, our kids, our family members. We recognize that the report is incredibly dense and that there's a lot of information in it that we potentially did not cover in this. Some things that did come up during the community session specifically, I went through and kind of did some counts on what came around that I think is important to highlight are things like staff support and wellness. We do have a recovery plan that has been our roadmap all along for the last couple years that has helped guide some of the practices and policies, and it's a living document. It's continuously being updated as we continue to learn because we commit to be in a learning organization. I don't think there's anything that we can say that would act sincerely as enough and again, express our deep and profound sorrow for the incident that happened on 11/30, especially towards our families who had the ultimate loss. We continue to learn. We continue to improve, and we will continue to go and go to the government and ask for things. At the end of the day, we are using this in a way to help my kids, Mike's kids, Manda's kids, your kids hopefully never experience something so incredibly tragic again. hopefully never experience something so incredibly tragic again. And we are sorry. I'm sorry if Clay was here. I can say I'm sorry. And I'm very sorry for that. So as we, I, thank you. So, thank you. This is still a business meeting. And we will go ahead and move forward on the next item of the agenda if the rest of the board has no other conversation on this. Board of Education Matters, number seven, the reimbursement request for approval. Colleen?
Move to approve the reimbursement request from Mary Hanser for $246.61 in expenses for the MASB 2023 Annual Conference.
I'll support it.
Mike supported it too.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number eight, curriculum and instruction. We had the middle school social studies curriculum. They came and presented at our last meeting. I'll take a motion. Go ahead, Amena.
Move to adopt the TCI, SAVIS, and HMH Middle School Curriculum Resources.
James? Any discussion?
I just have a quick comment on it. I thought they did a great job and I thought that they, you know, that curriculum's come a long way. And it was super interesting and I think it, I think they did a great job. And it was very interesting to me to watch how the different grade levels interact with each other. And even though they're different curriculums, they still can loop together. That was very interesting.
Good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Safety and School Operations, our quarterly safety update. Dr. Williman?
This safety update retains two, the ongoing recovery plans that we have. And then at the end of the year, we'll be able to share some of the threat assessment and suicide risk assessment that we have. So conducting building and vulnerability assessments, what we did over the summer because my department found that the CISA tool that is required by the state of Michigan is not thorough enough for our expectations. And so we took eight different assessment tools ranging from OSHA, Department of Justice, PASS, Homeland Security, CISA, and combined them into one document, which we will begin those assessments in January. Next week, I will be meeting with principals across the district and we will get those scheduled to begin in January. That does include an intruder component, so we will have someone not employed by Oxford Community Schools attempt to come up into our buildings. They will not be armed. It'll just be to see, are they able to breach any intruder door? How long does it take to identify, to be asked to identify themselves? Are they stopped in front office and such? These assessments will be done with administrators and anything that is brought to our attention because we will be looking at both safety and security components, we will submit work orders for. I know I received an email from a teacher today about something not working in her classroom, notified Mr. Barner. We already have a schedule for when the company that needs to come to get it is coming out, and it was within a matter of 10 minutes. So we do take those, any work orders very seriously, and the maintenance department and my department were very closely together about that. And then we will bring that to our district safety committee to share. The next one is adding a 24/7 weapons detection system. We are still working on DRIFT net being installed. It will run redundantly with our current systems. We will collect performance data on any system that we have and will not stop using any other system currently in place until we're satisfied with that component. We will utilize the weapons detection dog as appropriate at all campuses across the district. And we will work with Mr. Vork, who is Daisy's handler, to be able to schedule those as needed. The next is that Oxford Community Schools will continue to employ two SROs who are housed at OHS and OMS to support the entire district. They are active members of our B-TAM team, also attend our monthly meetings. They support all of our campuses as needed to ensure the safety and security of our stakeholders. We did have Oakland County Sheriff's Office present on cyber safety during our parent university, and our SROs are attending training. There's a virtual training that's offered for them. They're both actively taking that as well as participating in the training that we have here. Our SROs are visible in the schools. They're here tonight. They take part in our parent university and they participate on our B-TAM teams as well as our suicide risk assessment teams. We will maintain the use of clear backpacks at secondary schools based on student survey results. And they have, they were purchased for sixth and ninth grade students. And students at secondary schools will continue to carry clear backpacks. We will maintain our AED fleet, additional stopgap leap kits, and conduct ongoing staff training. And so a lot of, we ordered additional AEDs this year. A lot of them are covered like the band so that they have affordable one. They're not relying on anyone athletics because athletics tends to go on the same time as band. So we want to make sure we have the additional ones that are going to support athletics, the schools themselves, and other finance programs. And then we still, we have our training, whether that is what's in your stopgap leap kit type of training and our AED drills. All of our schools are currently in compliance with the HeartSmart certification through Michigan. Most do not expire until the end of this year, and they all are aware of that. We ask parents as part of the information update in their registration each year to acknowledge the safe gun storage as that law has changed in Michigan and we do have that updated information in our home and packing. And we will continue to have that as part of our registration materials. And that has been checked with our people accountant and power school coordinator. Each campus has a monthly B-TAM meeting, although it is called our B-TAM team. We do address multiple things over the course of that meeting, whether it is threat assessment, suicide risk assessment, our emergency operation plans, emergency response, and bullying investigations. I facilitate those meetings. We review the data. We look at school and district tenant trends. We use it to calibrate as well as any other professional learning that we could have. As Dr. Markovich detailed in the Guidepost response, we do spend time discussing things like suspicionless searches, reasonable suspicion. Who does what? What is your role? And then we, at this point, we've completed at least four meetings by the time we break for Christmas break. The high school will be at three due to some scheduling conflict between different things in late starting October. But they will have three by the time we go to Christmas break. And then we have agendas and assignment sheets. And you'll see with our, the data that I'll show at the end of the changes that have been made with our screening process and our searching. We will host a Prepare Workshop One class on January 15th. We have 23 crisis team members and ICS team members that are currently, have not received this training. And so I will provide that training in January 15th. They went to Maryland over the summer and learned from the NAS, which is the National Association of School Psychologists, trainers, that trained trainers. And so part of that is they do have to take a free and post test, and so their proof will be when they take that post test. It is a lot, Workshop One focuses a lot on the emergency management. We said that workshop two focuses more on recovery and the mental health side. And I know that Mr. Barner wasn't here. There he is. We have both taken workshops one and two just because it's not one piece and the other. We both have to have an understanding of each other's roles and work together to be able to help everyone be safe and recover well. B-TAM training for all of you B-TAM team members, we held a training on November 13th. So 100% of our B-TAM teams across the district are trained. And the, myself and the school safety administrator are training. We attended a training last spring by Dr. Melissa Reeves through the Michigan State Police Office of School Safety to train us to be able to train our districts and other districts throughout Michigan in the basic threat assessment and TAC model. We've hosted threat assessment and suicide risk assessment training for support staff as well as the community. I've completed training with transportation, child nutrition, central office, and OALC so far. We're working on scheduling other support staff. We had a parent university session on October 2nd where Dr. Melissa Reeves and Michigan State Police came and presented. And then working with the Department of Homeland Security as they have some community engagement and community awareness events as well that they are willing to come do. Part of the requirement, as Dr. Markovich also spoke about during the Guidepost response, is our required safety and security trainings. And we've gone over that before, but that is a required component of working here. New employees have additional ones that they need to take, but this is some of them that they take. And the threat assessment and suicide awareness prevention and postvention do not replace any official training that they would have to be members of the B-TAM team. So if you're a member of a B-TAM team, you also have to take this vector training in addition to going through the full B-TAM training and participating in the Columbia Lighthouse Project's self-paced training. We'll complete all state required drills. So those have to be drilled, the principals have to send that information to Oakland County each year. And then they also have to send the calendar invites because I go and evaluate them. The state has a evaluation sheet. We do not have to submit to the state, but it is something for us to keep in mind so that as we're going through various drills, we're able to do a quick after action. Something like the false alarm at Oxford Middle School was, we did a longer after action. But typically during a fire drill, we do a quick, what worked, what didn't work, how can we improve? Same thing when, if we're doing a tornado drill, just so that we're constantly keeping that idea that we're looking to strengthen and refine everything that we do. There are required forms from the state of Michigan that get submitted and posted on our website. Our goal is to become an Alice certified organization. I met with Navigate 360, who now owns Alice, to determine our progress. We have two things left to do and it's paperwork that I have to submit to them. So we will become an Alice certified organization. And part of what I'm here to share as well is reviewing data with you. Today I will be reviewing threat assessment and suicide risk assessment data so far this year. Okay to Say, we will continue to encourage everyone to see something, say something, and report something. Ideally, we would like that to be reported to a trusted adult, but we have the confidential tip line of Okay to Say and we continue to encourage everyone to use it. In fact, two nights ago, we received a gaggle alert of a student emailing their counselor out of a concern for another student. And probably within five minutes, I got a call from Okay to Say about the exact same situation. And so I, and because it's a confidential tip line, I can't say it was the same kid. But even if it was, that's an excellent way to use your resources. And even if it was two different kids, way to see something, say something. And so our kids are using, are using this and they're doing everything that they can to help each other. And it just, it's powerful to see our kids wanting to support each other. And the quick actions of our after-hours gaggle team. Because then the gaggle came in, the Okay to Say came in, and I was able to talk to the person that responded to it so that we're both not calling mom. Because I can get, I'd be a little scary when it's almost 10 o'clock at night and you're getting a phone call from the district about the same thing. So we were able to report that Okay to Say was able to give me some different information than what was in the gaggle. And so we were able to give mom a complete picture of what alerted us in the first place. And so we'll just continue to have ongoing training and making sure everyone is aware of Okay to Say. As I said a few slides ago, we did have Okay to Say, Michigan State Police did come out as part of our parent university to give a presentation. And so we will definitely continue to work with them and partner with them and encourage anyone that if they see something, say something. Okay to Say is a great, great place to inform us. And of course, if there is immediate danger, if there's anything imminent, please call 911. This is a tip line. It is not an emergency response line. And then we will continue to work with Oakland County Sheriff's Office, specifically our SROs and the substation lieutenant and sergeant to be able to evaluate anything that does come our way. And so when our evidence on this is, we have outcome reports that we have to complete that does go to the state, goes to Michigan State Police. And then we continue to do, repeat during advisory lessons. We have things posted in schools and during our group level meetings to be able to let them know that this is a viable option for them. And then if we look at what our threat assessment report from August to November looks like, the gray screen, we no longer have no threat level indicated because that's not an option. With our full implementation of Navigate 360, that's been replaced. I wanted you to see how many screeners that we're doing. We've developed a very thorough screening process. This has been reviewed by various people, experts in the school safety committee as well as mental health. I have a mental health subcommittee that I meet with regularly that span the grade levels to be able to look at, we're ensuring the safety and security of the students in question, in trouble, as well as the staff and students in the building. So as you can see, the number of full threat assessments have gone down because of our screening process. A component of our screening process is we use the NTAC model. So we did not take anything away from that. What we did was we added to it. And part of it that we have on there is when we determine we're not running a full threat assessment or we're not running a full suicide risk assessment is they have to justify why and what the follow-up is going to be. And required is their checking for weapons for threat assessment, dangerous instrumentality, which includes lethal weapons in suicide risk assessment because a suicide, a student who is expressing suicidal ideation may not be intending to use a lethal weapon. There are various ways that you could want to hurt yourself instead. And so we want to check for both dangerous instrumentality, but also not leave out the lethal weapon. Contacting parents and then making sure that the principal of the campus had notified the elementary. There isn't an assistant principal, but when you look at secondary, there are assistant principals. So I make them say, who doesn't ever get surprised, the principal. And then they have to say the principal's name from back my teacher time. What you see at the high school is there were two that were high priority. I want to point out that these were not a threat to the entire campus. It was two students who had problems with each other and their behaviors were escalating. So the threat assessment team elected to do a threat assessment on both students because the conflict between the two students was escalating and we wanted to ensure they had the proper supports. Because whether we're conducting a threat assessment or a suicide risk assessment, there is a student that is expressing trouble, concern, needs help in some way, shape, or form. So these two were not threats to the entire campus. It was two students threatening each other. And so I want to make that there because when you see two high, it can be a little concerning. So so far at this point in the year, we have completed 12 full threat assessments and 59 screeners. So that's a total of 73. The screening process really helps our teams evaluate where the student can best be served. And that doesn't mean there's not consequences that come from it, that there's not third-party evaluations or check-in. Like it's, you can still have all of those things without going to a full threat assessment. Something can be recorded and still be concerning our school inappropriate behavior where we have various ways that we can help that student. And then when we look at suicide risk assessment from August to November, again, you can see our screeners look a lot different. And again, because no threat or no level indicated is no longer an option at all. And so you are able to see that we have been able to address the needs of the students and really pay attention as well to inquiring about dangerous instrumentality, including lethal weapons for both threat assessment and suicide risk assessment, we are at 100%. And that's because part of the screening process includes that. And then there are required components within Navigate 360, but they cannot close the gates without an inquiry and allow access to lethal weapons or dangerous instrumentality, including lethal weapons for suicide risk assessment. Questions?
Any questions?
Yeah. Going back to the pre-planned live duress buttons that are no longer in use, that didn't work. Can you tell me, is there anything right now in place that would be considered a duress button? Or will that be the card readers that are still not installed?
Part of that is the card readers. The card readers aren't installed. They're just not programmed currently. We want to be able to do a whole thorough test without students in the building so as not to create any traumatic experiences of what we had with the false alarm. as not to create any traumatic experiences of what we had with the false alarm. That we, the school safety administrator, I've walked throughout the high school and the middle school to place those in ways that we, people could evacuate in an emergency situation. What we're also looking at is exploring Alyssa's Law is currently in process. What that would require is a silent alarm in each classroom. Multiple states have already adopted that. There is also a bill in progress at the federal level. And so, part of what Dr. Markovich and I have been focusing on is what's going to be the best, the best one to address our needs, because we have, we have a lot of stuff. We want stuff to talk to each other. And so, making sure we have whatever we pick is going to work, and that it's also going to be able to work with our other systems we currently have in place.
So the card readers that are going to be installed?
Speed up, please.
Sorry. The card readers that are going to be in, programmed, sorry, input into use, would they be compatible for this silent alarm or no?
Those would be in the hallways. So what Alyssa's Law requires is in each classroom. And so, that would meet the needs of the law.
So we would need additional technology. Does the Edwards Mass Notification System, is, do they have something like that?
That's part of what we're investing.
Okay, sorry, I won't get too far ahead on that. Okay.
But again, it's not currently law, so we're just trying, because we know it's been put in place in other states, we know it's in progress at the federal level, Dr. Markovich and I know it's coming, and it is best practice to have that. Ideally, that one would be able to work and do what it's supposed to do.
Sure, thank you. As far as volunteers or other adults in the building, during OMS, I know that some people did not know what to do. Where are we at with Alice Stop the Bleed training for volunteers or other adults that come into the buildings?
I'm creating the volunteer one. Substitutes is part of their employment. They do have to go through the similar vector training that other people do, but for mere volunteers, we have to practice a little different.
Sure.
And so, that's kind of the balance that we're making, and it just gets to making sure that we're keeping safety and security where it needs to be, but informing those who are in the building regularly, who face that option of having to install a night lock. Things like having to install a night lock is not something that needs to necessarily be secret. It's rather self-explanatory. But there are other components that regular parent volunteers do need to be aware of since they are frequent in our buildings. We're just striking that balance of keeping everyone safe and then ensuring we still have proper security practices in place.
Okay, thank you. And actually, to piggyback off the vector, mandatory trainings that you have for staff, can you just give me a little overview? Obviously, there's a test at the end of every training. Is it a pass/fail? Can you give me an idea of that process?
There's typically a percentage that you have, you can get an 80% or whatever their percentage is in order to pass, and then you have the opportunity to, if you fail, you have to go through the training again.
Okay. That's all for now, thank you.
Any other questions? I just had a quick question. Is there a duplication of numbers in the screeners and then the things that are ex? So once you've done the screener, is the number then duplicated in the other column?
These are solely screeners.
Okay.
And then, the low, moderate, high, or the minimal, moderate, high, eminent, that's solely what is put in the Navigate 360. The screeners are housed somewhere else.
But the same student that you screened to determine to go into one of those categories is the number? Are they counted twice, is what I'm asking?
So, for example, clearly had four, so there were technically six screeners, but two of them went to full assessment, so there were only four screeners for clearly.
Okay. And then when you do the, under the academic year report, I guess my request would be to annualize the data and then also bring us forward the data from the previous academic year, which I know you did last year, but to continue to do that so we can see, I think it may even be helpful in the quarterly to see if there's discerning trends in any of our buildings, because seeing it in one little snapshot may not be as telling as looking at it over a different period of time as well.
I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
All right. I did have a quick question. Sure. Thank you. Have you seen, have you seen these figures? Have you seen these figures from any other school district in the state? Does anybody else compile these figures?
Not that they've shared. I am working with the Office of the Emergency Management of Oakland County right now to create a group of us that will be with the emergency management team at least quarterly, if not monthly, as well as our first responders to be able to review things like this. As threat assessment, the bill is currently in the sub-education committee, it's 498. Threat assessment is not required in the state of Michigan, so I cannot guarantee what training any other districts have had to even start to compile this and create a comparison. I know a lot of districts in that area are starting to go through the training, but I don't know what their process looks like. And that's partially why when we're in the team management team of Oakland County and I are working on trying to get that team together so we can have that ability to talk through and at the district level, trying to know what our other districts seem to be able to support each other.
Right, and it would be helpful to see what trends we're seeing across the state to better educate what supports students across the county or the state need. Okay, thank you.
Going on to the next agenda item, we have unscheduled public comments. Just a reminder that the public comment time is three minutes. There is a little device on the table that lights up green, then it will start to flash yellow as your time is starting to wind down, and then it will be read at three minutes. We have a pretty thick deck here, so I please ask that you keep to the three minutes so we can go ahead and get through them all tonight. And we will go ahead and start with Brandy Rebekki.
All right. So after hearing what some of the community members and students have dealt with after speaking at the last few board meetings and signing petitions for the health of not only our community and also our kids, I again urge many of you to resign. I wanted to make statements to Heather specifically, but as she couldn't be bothered to be here for whatever reason regarding her snarky comments and facial expressions, but also her general smugness and inability to take accountability. These lack of empathy and inability to take accountability also apply to you as well, Mary. I just watched you smirking through several of these things while I sat over there. These characteristics and actions alone are causing damage to how the Oxford community and students, but also outside communities, view the entire board and district overall. I absolutely do not think that any of you, especially Heather, Mary, Colleen, or Vicki, should have any hand or input in choosing our next superintendent. That choice is something that we as parents and all of our children will have to deal with for years to come, and we will have to work with that person. And you have proven time and time again to be untrustworthy at best. The community is barely going to begin taking baby steps after Friday, and you absolutely cannot continue to be in charge of these children's futures. Grief and trauma have no timeline at all, and they are not linear. And many of you seem to think that these families of those who lost their children or those who have suffered traumatic experiences at the hands of this board and this district should just be over it or be fine. That's ignorant and harmful and has no place in any position of power. I spoke last month about regarding trauma, cortisol, and the brain and memory. You should, and I just, based on that alone, you should not be in charge of determining if trauma-informed response standards are being met as well as not be in charge of determining who our next superintendent should be. So as I have stated before, and has many of my community members have stated, do everyone a favor and resign as soon as possible so that we can get people in here that will take the kids and their needs seriously.
Sorry, I've never done this before. I hope I'm not attacked or beaten down for speaking my mind tonight, but no matter the difference in opinions in this room, you're all human beings and you deserve to hear something positive and uplifting every once in a while. So as a school staff member myself, Oxford parent, and Oxford alumni, I want to share with you some positive things that are happening in some of our buildings. We're having monthly PBIS celebrations where our whole school gets together with parent volunteers, and the kids are enjoying themselves. Last month, we made ornaments, the kids got to keep one, and then we donated one for each student to the senior center near us. We have Mix It Up Mondays where parent volunteers come in and students grab a sucker from them. They sit at a table labeled with that sucker, so they're able to interact and make friends with students they wouldn't normally sit next to or interact with. I'm on our district well-being committee for the staff, and today we spent hours filling gift bags for staff across the district to try and spread as much love and positivity as possible. I can tell you that staff members in our building, in our building and throughout the district are giving their all, day in and day out, as heartbeats of our buildings, even when we're constantly feeling beaten down by our community. I would like it known that speaking tonight, that by speaking tonight, I'm in no way against any of these victims' families in this district at all. I myself have supported every fundraiser I can for these families, and I'm more just trying to stand up to show other staff members who, like me, have been scared to speak up with any positivity that they're not alone. Thank you for continuing on.
Good evening. I have had a long history with the Oxford School District, and my granddaughter, who was a freshman, was in the 200 hallway on the day the shots rang out. I'm going to start with four things I know for sure. One is one does not get over trauma. Two, everyone's reaction to trauma needs to be respected and supported. Three, our community needs to heal with love and accountability. And four, two things may be true at the same time. Good, decent, loving people may make mistakes and use poor judgment. That does not mean they are bad people, but accountability helps the healing of those affected by their mistakes and poor judgment. Knowing these things, those of us who are asking for accountability are doing so out of love for those affected by the events of November 30th, 2021, and out of respect for those whose lack of oversight and poor judgment allowed the tragedy to occur. Their names and faces only serve to trigger the trauma already inflicted on those who were there that day and the families and friends of those who were murdered and/or wounded. In any other case, those whose poor judgment led to mistakes resulting in death and trauma would be subject to the consequences of their actions or inactions. The guidepost report leaves no doubt that certain individuals used poor judgment and made mistakes in reacting to the events early on that day, and indeed, that the system itself, early on in the year, failed to ensure the oversight of policies that could have prevented the tragedy from happening. The oversight to ensure that everyone knew about and was trained in how to use the process of threat assessment and EOP was the purview of the school board, the superintendent, and the administration. Good people all, but their inability to live up to their responsibilities of their position led to the tragedy. Whether there will be legal consequences or not will be up to our justice system. Non-legal consequences will reflect the morality and will of our community. One does not get over trauma. Trauma has to be acknowledged in the present and managed for the rest of one's life. We are asking for accountability so that this trauma that has affected so much of our community is acknowledged in the present, and each person affected can begin to manage the effects of their trauma. We think that such acknowledgement involves members stepping back, resigning from their positions on the school board, individual staff members not being promoted or reassigned to other positions in the district, and all employees being required to take part in the investigation if requested by guideposts. Restorative justice is just as important as legal justice.
Thank you.
Only love and accountability for all those involved will help this community heal. I hope we have the will and the integrity to do that.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I know there's, obviously, guideposts is taking things front and center tonight, but I noticed you guys were doing a search. You had a search firm that you hired to do the superintendent's search back in November, the end of November, Hazard, Young, Ateya, and Associates. I just did a real quick search on the internet before I came here, and there seems to be multiple school districts that had problems with them. Some of the headlines are waste of time and money, paying shockingly terrible company tens of thousands. Flint hires same search firm that found their ex-supervisor. They were paid $398,000 to go away. I don't know if you guys have done any research on them, but I don't know if there's been any sort of a contract cut, but I think you probably should do a little bit of research on them before we possibly create more problems and pay a lot of money for it in the meantime.
So I don't know what really happened there with the guidepost report, and that I was really looking for more of a response from the board than the superintendent. In the listening sessions, there was a great deal of focus on accountability and holding the people accountable and, you know, removing them from the district and the discipline, but that was all glossed over. I don't remember that being addressed, but that was all over in all of the listening sessions and in the public hearing portion when guideposts met. So you have all these committees and subcommittees that you get all this stuff from. You're running around 1,000 miles an hour, all this, instead of just kind of focusing on the core concepts. I don't really understand it, but you have all these committees and subcommittees and parent committees, except none of us know about it. When we ask about it, we're told that it's secret, we can't know, we can't know what's going on. But the law says that the EOP has to be developed with input from the public. How do you get input when you don't tell us where the meetings are, you don't tell us who the people in the committees are, we don't know who the parents are involved, we don't know the criteria, right? I put my name in for that committee how many times? I've never even got a response. So what are you hiding behind? We all should know that. Maybe if we knew who was on these committees, we would have a little bit more trust. So you need to develop trust. In your presentation, you had talked about the wellness program and all these services that you have and all these great programs you have. Well, I can tell you, I'm hearing from the kids and the people. It's not working, so you're not listening. So I went to your website, and we talked about this student support and wellness. This is right from your website today, and you have all these people listed. Todd Barless, the link doesn't work. The link does not work on your website. And then you have Bridget Bitner, the link does not work. Laura Anzoni, the link does not work. Director of Student Services, page not found. K through 12 restorative practice, not found. Recovery corridor, page not found, right? Wow. So all of the stuff you say you're giving, we can't even get information on because none of your links work on the website. So the only link that does work is for Dr. Christine Russell. Russell, who doesn't have a license or anything. I don't see any credentials or certificates. I don't know what she's a doctor of. But that's the only one that works for restorative, you know, practices. That's the only one that works, but there's nothing on there that's helpful for people. So then we go on to the Family-School Liaison, which you mentioned, right? So these are the people, right? And it says here, what does the family liaison do? Helps the students, gives them individual reception, brings the parents in, does the group work, does all that. So who is their person? Let's talk about it. The high school, Pam Fine. Pam Fine is a liaison, according to your website, for the high school. Pam Fine, the person who worked with Hopkins, didn't do the threat assessment, ended up giving the kid his backpack with the gun in it, right? That person, the person who, the day before, knew about him looking up bullets?
Kaylee, can you go ahead and wrap up your time?
Right. I understand. You didn't interrupt. So that person is the one that you are telling all these parents and the kids they have to go to, to get services and to get help. What do you think? Are you thinking? Do you think they want to go to her? Right?
Thank you, Kaylee.
I think the answer for self.
Next up is Linda Jo White.
Good evening. My name is Linda Jo White, and I'm here to be a voice for the legacies of the seven Madison, Tate, Justin, and Hannah. I'm a resident of Oxford, mother to a junior in high school, and have lived in Clarkson-Oxford area for most of my life. I stand before yours, I stand before you, or sit before you, as a result of watching the past couple years unfold and realizing after Friday's sentencing that I can no longer remain silent. I'm a purpose-driven woman of faith who hates injustice and is driven to be an answer to a question in my generation. I know the universe is built on laws, and these laws have been put in place by God to protect and guide us and to allow for healing and restoration when those times of healing and restoration are so desperately needed and necessary. My son Elijah was friends with Hannah and Tate. Hannah had befriended Elijah in eighth grade and supported and encouraged him during some challenging times. Tate was an inspiration and a motivator to Elijah. As he rebounded from about with COVID just before summer freshman football camp, my son benefited from the healing love, leadership, and light that came from Hannah and Tate during the two years that led up to November 30th, in which also was a time my husband had almost died twice, once from congestive heart failure and once from COVID. He would have been in that high school that day had the system not sent on an email just before school began stating there were changing the way COVID traceability would take place. This put my husband at risk of dying again if he caught COVID, and we couldn't afford that, so we made a decision to switch E's enrollment to OVA. I firmly believe, and am driven by a profound truth, which is this: Where purpose is not known, abuse is inevitable, resulting in that inevitable abuse being a most tragic injustice. Let me say it again. Where purpose is not known, abuse is inevitable, resulting in that inevitable abuse be the most tragic injustice. This proven truth is found first in the events of November 30th, as we see a human not knowing the purpose of another human and forever changing the lives of many precious humans. And secondly, we find this proven truth in the subsequent and consistent mishandlings pertaining to the requests made by the families of the precious humans as they seek resolve, closure, and healing. My professional background includes 25-plus years of corporate quality training and auditing in the automotive manufacturing space, and I spent years looking at nonconformances in systems, conducting root cause analysis, and ultimately putting in place corrective actions to ensure that systems would not see the recurrence of those nonconformances. It's all these things that has me before you today respectfully, reminding you that our school system is broken, has been broken, and will continue to remain broken unless the right individuals are able to conduct a proper root cause analysis of the nonconformances and put corrective actions in place so that inevitable abuses resulting in tragic injustices will never happen in our community ever again. I'm almost finished, if I may. This past Friday, while watching the families speak their truth, I created a Facebook post that summed up how I feel and many others feel. It was simply one red, four white, and seven yellow hearts on a blue background, in these words. Today and forevermore, their names will be spoken across the land as beacons of light, purpose, and love. So lastly, in moving forward, we shall speak for them freely, unapologetically, and joyfully, because those of you who know that you need to resign will resign, thus allowing for corrective actions to our systems that include accountability of certain individuals as well as the district, gun control changes, and the much-needed and necessary mental help for our families and our children. This is a season to know our purpose and end the abuse and injustice. I thank you for your time, and remember, my name is Linda Jo White, and I'm here to honor the children who took the bullet, and I'm here to be a voice for the legacy of the seven Madison, Tate, Justice, and Hannah.
Hi.
Hello.
So, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Angela Adams. At first, I want to send my condolences to the families and the friends and everyone affected by the loss. My concern is a little different, unfortunately. So I am here because I didn't really see any other option. I need to protect my daughter and address the racial norms in the high school. My daughter has experienced multiple children making monkey gestures at her and monkey sounds. It does not seem as if it is a major issue to the high school. Some children, and it's been multiple different children, and I have asked about information on Title IX. I have talked to, I don't even know who the man is as far as maybe Assistant Principal or so. I clicked on the website for the link of discrimination and inclusion for Title IX, and it sends me to some page that doesn't exist. The young man that actually did the last time, I was told that the moves was actually a Fortnite dance in the midst of an argument. Somehow, the cameras does not have sound, so the other children on the football and wrestling team stated that the monkey sounds was not made this time. I'm quite frustrated, and I'm not certain what I am supposed to do as a parent. My daughter is a great student. She's been in the district since she was three years old. She is on the swim team, her first year swimming, which is great. And I don't think she deserves, or any child of color deserves, this type of abuse and this type of bullying. I think that saying a Fortnite dance is unacceptable, and I don't understand the logic behind that, and I don't think the child should be able to compete in any sports like this Saturday. While we can't get in contact with his parents, as my child is still in class with this young man and his friends who laugh, so I would like to be able to have a space to talk to someone concerned in the matter, and I appreciate it. And I'm sorry, it doesn't seem my issue is as big as everyone losing.
It's still important.
So, here we go again. We've been doing this dance here, all of us together, for two years, where we come and we have very simple, straightforward questions, and you say a lot of words and answer none of them. This meeting tonight, this presentation, all I can think of is it's like an obscene Saturday Night Live skit. You don't get to brag about all of the things you're doing now. Or, and I appreciate positivity, but we don't even get to do that until we talk about and find out what happened that day and why it happened. You answered none of the important questions we had at those listening sessions. We all know it. You know it. You know it. There's a quote by Eli Weisler that says something like, "It isn't just the cruelty of the oppressors that hurts victims, but the silence of the bystanders." I would ask the people in this community that are board apologists to think about that quote long and hard. As always, I am here because of my son Keegan, his classmates, his friends, and these families, who, like I said last time, we are protective over. Friday, after I listened to 22 victim impact statements during the sentencing for the Oxford shooter, I left the court that day with a strange sense of calm. It wasn't because of the verdict the judge read. I realized it was because Judge Roe didn't said things that I've never seen or heard here in my own school district.
Yes.
Judge Roe looked into the eyes of all of those victims. He said he was sorry. He said their name. He said, "I know this is hard for you." At the end of the trial, he told the Oxford High School kids that he sees them, and he knows that walking in those hallways every day is difficult. It's the first time in two years that I felt like someone was talking to my kid. How is it you can go two years without looking these kids in the eyes and saying those things? How can you be work in education, call yourselves advocates of kids, and never have said those words to these kids? If you haven't said those words to at least 200 kids, then it's shameful. My son is a freshman at Michigan State right now. I've told you this before. We shoulder this burden for him. His sister, his dad, his brother and I, we are here on behalf of him and his friends. There is a reckoning coming to this district. You think you are saving this district by moving forward at all costs. You are not. You are not going to save this district and this community by hiding and pretending this didn't happen. There is a reckoning coming. They are going to make a movie of this someday. There are going to be celebrities playing you. Think about it. Think about the role that you are playing and how you are going to be portrayed, because right now you are not showing these kids anything to look up to.
Marissa Prince.
Really?
So I've been thinking about the superintendent's search and our former superintendent and the money we're spending to choose a superintendent. You know, and the firms, I mean, it sounds like it's really hard to find someone, you know, that wants to do this work. And I think about how much we pay them and how much we're paying for the search. I'm thinking like, what if we just didn't hire one, you know? What if we took all that money and we just gave it to our teachers, you know?
Yeah.
Because we have all these amazing teachers. One of my favorite things to do is brag about my kids' teachers in Oxford, you know, because they have like these amazing teachers. And I have a feeling if on November 30th, if we had gotten all the teachers that were like saying, "Hey, there's got a problem here," you know, we put them all in a room together, I think they would have figured this out. Because our teachers know, you know, they know their kids and they know when there's a problem. But they sent it to the front of the house, and they sent them right back. So, you know, why do we, why do we need a superintendent? If they're not gonna, if you're going to create these policies and they're not going to actually ever roll them out or inform anyone about them, maybe we don't need a superintendent, you know? Maybe the cabinet members could take turns being superintendent a week at a time, and we could give that money to our teachers. Because we have all these amazing teachers. They work so hard, and they deserve it. There was, there was a note up here that one of the teachers asked for hard copies of the policies, but we're going to wait and do that next year. Why don't we do that now? Why don't we do that this weekend? I read a comment from the teacher feedback in elementary school where an elementary school teacher said, "I need more threat assessment training. I don't understand it." It's in your 40-page document. She said, "I need more in-person threat assessment training." Was that handled? You've got these teams, and they all know what they're doing, but do the people who are with the children all day, every day, do they understand it? I'm asking you. They're saying in the feedback that some of them don't. So let's get our teachers what they need, because I love my kids' teachers, and I want them to have what they need. All of them. High school, elementary, middle, bridges, OVA, crossroads, all of them. Thank you.
I don't like the chair. So my words, I want to stress, come from a place of love and understanding. And I recognize that when you joined the board, you had a genuine desire to be effective leaders, contributing to the well-being of our students and the community at large. However, it has become increasingly clear that the current state of leadership is falling short of providing the services, hope, and help that were originally envisioned when each of you chose to run for and were elected for the school board. I urge you to reflect on what might be preventing you from fully listening to the voices within our community and the student body calling for a change in leadership to facilitate the healing that they desperately need. By stepping back, there is an opportunity for each of you to reassess and become more effective, aligning with your initial mission to aid Oxford as a whole. It's crucial to recognize the profound impact of your presence, what it has on this community and the intricate relational dynamics within it. In the realm of the inner dynamics, I draw a parallel to Dick Schwartz. He has this law of inner physics and is the father of IFS, Internal Family Systems. And he compares, I'm comparing our situation to a family therapy scenario, where Colleen, Heather, and Mary, and Wolf, and Fine currently play the role of an unyielding figure, much like a grandpa in a family analogy. Just as the rest of the family cannot open up if grandpa remains unchanged, our community cannot progress if there is resistance to the change that many are calling for. I invite each of you to reflect on any of the fears that may be hindering your decision to step down. The overarching goal is to rebuild trust within the community and the student body, ensuring that all voices, including those still within our school system, are heard and valued. I'm sure everyone can agree that that is a goal. Anxiety has manifested as anger, which is a common response to underlying fears and uncertainties, particularly in the aftermath of November 30th. So we seek the change through expressions of frustration because vulnerability that's been displayed over the past 700-plus days has not yielded the desired outcomes. Instances like Linda Watson's impact statement at the school's approach for the trauma-informed practices is evident because they're still mandating doctor's notes for her. During our freshman orientation, I found out that students were discouraged from discussing the events of November 30th with upperclassmen. This restrictive approach impedes the healing process, almost done, and further emphasizes the urgency for change. And I want you to remember that each of you is an integral part of this community. When I talk about the community, I'm talking about you too. So when we speak of healing, we mean it for everyone. It's a unified community. So I implore you to consider the- So I implore you to consider the greater good of our community and acknowledge that sometimes stepping back is the most powerful step forward. Thank you.
Andrea Jones.
Really glad we got through that very important business of approving Mary's dinner for $41 for braised short ribs and potatoes. That was just dire. I want to begin with a quote. Forgiveness does not relieve someone from responsibility for what they have done. Without acknowledgement of the wrongdoing, there would be nothing to forgive. So let's talk about love for a minute. We hear a lot of big words being thrown around these past couple of weeks. Love, hatred, vengeance, right? Everybody's got an opinion about what those words mean. But for me, I've seen extraordinary acts of love in the past two years from many people sitting in this room that come and speak. I've seen people spend the anniversary putting out bags in their neighborhood all day to light the way for, for their lost babysitter. I've seen people not just take meals, but be there truly in true, good, honest friendships for these families. A lot of us didn't know these families. I didn't. I didn't know anybody involved with us until after this happened. I started showing up here. I was never a parent that attended board meetings ever until this happened. And I came to the first one and I wanted to hear what the district's response was. And what drove me to come to the first meeting was after Karen McDonald held her first press conference, and she talked about the homework assignment and all the things that we found out during that. So as a parent, I went to the website that night to, I wanted to read the code of conduct myself. I wanted to go back and look at the communications regarding the deer head and everything else that had happened leading up to the shooting. And to my surprise, I couldn't find them on the website. So I called another parent and I said, "Hey, don't go through your email," because, you know, sometimes we're lazy and have 46,000 emails and they're probably in there, right? "But go to the website and see if you can find them on the district website." About an hour later, I got a return call. No, they're not there. So while we were attending funerals, the district was scrubbing the website. And that really didn't leave a good taste in my mouth from the very beginning, even though in my gut, I had already felt there was a very strong injustice about to occur. So I spent the rest of that night literally with a whiteboard and coming up with scenarios as to what possible reason could there be for scrubbing the website? And the only one, the only one that I could come up with was, "We're gonna do exactly what you did and not be accountable." And to this day, you continue to not be accountable. And it did not go without noticing, as we sat in that courtroom on Friday, that not one single board member or admin came to support these families or those students, but we were all there. So you tell me, when we're talking about love and hate and vengeance, who's the love?
Giselle Gillum.
How are you doing today? We don't talk to each other now. That's new. So I was planning on sticking to my script today, but this is a little too important. So Erin, your apology was a little bit scripted and quite honestly, I can't believe it didn't come from Mary or Heather themselves, because you two are the only two left responsible. And you still just sit there with your stone-cold little faces and look in the eyes of these families. They just want some accountability and apology and you can't even figure out how to give them that. What Marissa read, the apology before everything started, that's what we deserve. That's what we need. Your apology was scripted and didn't really mean much to, to anyone at all. Why can't you look us in the eyes and apologize yourself? Are you so guilty that you just can't get the words to come out of your mouth? I'm not really sure what it is, but it's a lot of disrespect to a lot of people that don't deserve it. Standing here and holding your ground, refusing to step back and resign, holding your ground only digs us deeper into our trauma. I don't know what you think you're helping, but we're struggling. We're not okay. We're not supposed to be, and your actions aren't fixing anything. Now I'll go back to what I was planning on saying. Hello, my name is Giselle. As you know, I'm here to kick and scream and stomp my feet, but tonight I'm taking a different approach. Tonight, I'm an advocate and a defender. I founded We Will Be Heard as a movement to give students a voice and unite our Wildcat family. I created it to bring peace, unity, and healing to our community. That is the mission I am committed to and that is the passion my words come from. Recently, I had an underclassman who was in eighth grade on November 30th of 2021 reach out to me. He shared one of his writings with me and it's something you all deserve to hear. It reads, "With all that had happened to me in the past 15 minutes, I truly didn't know what to feel. Should I feel scared of what's going on? Would it be selfish to be thankful it was at the high school and not where I was? Should I feel sad for everyone at the high school? It was too much for me to handle at the moment. I got picked up and we drove home. We drove past Meyer to see the parking lot full of people. And that night, when I was lying awake in my bed staring at the ceiling, I began to cry. I didn't know what had really happened. I didn't know who was hurt, but I did know that I was scared. Scared of what was to come and scared to look back. I was in middle school then, but now I walk through the halls of Oxford High School. I never saw the carpet where the blood of my fellow students had soaked into. I never saw the paint that had bullet holes and blood splattered across it, but some part of me wishes I had. Some part of me wishes that I was there so that I could have tried to stop it, but that's not the truth, is it? The truth is that I was in middle school. The truth is that like so many of you, I can only peer through the glass to see the aftermath. This child was filled with innocence, and although he wasn't present during the shooting, now that he walks our halls, he too feels the weight of it. In another writing, he shared with me the statement, "Why are all of the people who failed the children at Oxford High School, the people of Oxford, and most of all Hannah, Tate, Madison, and Justin, still in the position that they are? Their complete and utter failure has led to the death of children, the wounding of others and their teachers, and trauma that spans across communities. It's unfair and, dare I say, an injustice to everyone who has been affected by the events of November 30th that you still stand where you stood on that day. I believe that you wanted to be good people with good hearts, who love the children of the community you work for. I truly do. A tragedy has occurred to me and my Wildcats who were present on the 30th. But there are thousands of children who are filled with innocence, who have a future ahead of them, who still feel genuine happiness and joy. So instead of dwelling on the past and the failures and the terrible events, because clearly that hasn't worked, what if we focus on the future and the joy and the change capable of being made? These children need you to take accountability and take actions and responsibility to protect them, to protect their innocence and their future. These children need you to pull through for them and do what it takes to bring peace and protect them. My mother referenced a kind woman who was driving through a subdivision. The woman was unconsciously speeding and hit a child playing in the street. The child died, and although the woman was kind and had good intentions, she still had consequences for her actions. These children need to be able to heal. They need closure. They need to be able to ask for help from people that they believe are capable of truly helping them. So I'm asking you to do what you know is right. Bring healing and closure. Protect the future, the innocence of the children entering behind us, and give us the ability to start healing after more than two years. We're asking you to resign for the good of our own children, our own students, and our own community. It's not just me now. We have over 4.5 million people across the world listening, standing by us, and fighting our battles. We won't back down now. Resign."
Mary, how's your day going so far? You can answer. Don't be scared. I'm only 17. I'm not going to hurt you. You can answer. Does anybody else? I'm just, I'm genuinely curious, guys. How's your day going?
Our day is going well, thank you. As to the...
That's good. That's good. I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad that your day was good. As I hope that you would all remember, at this point, my name is Max Reed and I am here to correct myself on what I said last time. I am not a senior at Oxford High School. I am a senior at Oxford Virtual Academy. I went to Clear Lake Elementary for four years, Oxford Middle School for three years, and Oxford High School for two and a half. As I said last time, I was a sophomore the year of the shooting. I tried to go back, but with barely any support given from the board, it was hard. So I made the decision along with my family to do online school. I take one class at the high school now, and even I can see from only being there for an hour, there is no support there. None. There are counselors who care only about grades, teachers who are just trying to get through the day, which I respect so much. I love our teachers at Oxford High School. And students with their heads held low. But don't worry, they only have one headphone in just in case there's another shooting. I miss my friends. I miss being able to socialize and sit in class and gossip and joke at lunch. I miss being a normal kid. Last time I sat in the classroom was almost a year ago, because I can't do it anymore. I shouldn't have to sit in my house on a computer just to be able to learn. Online school is hard, but walking into Oxford High School knowing I have to be there for eight hours is impossible. I don't know if any of you are on social media, but recently, there's been three videos posted of me and two of my classmates who gave speeches last, or not last week, at the last meeting. As of right now, it has reached almost four and a half million views all over the world. Everybody knows you're in the spotlight. We have reached people in the US, Canada, the United Kingdom, Australia, and Germany. And we have gained nothing but support from those people. We have gained nothing but condolences and virtual hugs, which is more than any of you have given us, other than Dr. Erin. I appreciate your apology earlier. Two weeks ago, on December 1st, I got a call from my baby brother. I know that Mr. Bigelow addressed that situation earlier. This was written prior to that. He told me that he was scared because they were in lockdown. I was in class at Oxford High School when I received that call. He told me he loved me over and over again. Shortly after that, my mom called me to tell me everything that had happened. She was sobbing at the fact that two out of her three children could have gone through school shootings. I know that it was a false alarm, which quite honestly is ridiculous. I mean, you guys do understand how ridiculous that is, right? You're, you claim to have state-of-the-art technology, but it gets set off on binders? Okay, I'll take out my binder next time. Oh, it got set off on my Chromebook too? Okay, I'll take out my Chromebook and my binder next time. Oh, my glasses case too? Okay, I'll take out all of those things. I will empty my whole backpack for you just to go to school. Can you see how ridiculous that is? You hired security guards. Your security guards who you hired have also assaulted students. You want to know how I know that? I was one of them. There has been a report filed and I have heard nothing back. It has been almost a month. Ridiculous. The man who did it is standing in this room right now. He still works there. I see him almost every day. What happened was I was trying to enter the main office and I, to answer any questions, I was signed in. The weapon detector did not go off on me at all, and I had no bags on me. Tell me how that's okay. Tell me how being assaulted in your own school while you're trying to learn is okay. You have something to say?
I was hoping that we still have other speakers, and I understand you're telling us a important story.
I'm, I'm, I'll finish quickly. Don't worry, I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Thank you. You need to get up and take a deep breath. I do too. I'm, this is scary. But you need to get up, take a deep breath, and resign. You clearly aren't doing your jobs even after a school shooting. Come on now. Go home. I do not understand how you can still show your faces here after countless students, victims, siblings, parents. We've told you, we don't want you here. Mary, resign, please, for me, for Hannah St. Juliana's siblings, for Justin Schilling's siblings, for Tate Mir's siblings, for Madison Baldwin's siblings. Go home.
It's been 742 days since the avoidable tragedy and senseless murder of Tate, Hannah, Madison, and Justin. 742 days since eight others were injured and over 1,600 students, staff, terrorized, traumatized. 742 days and counting that they are all traumatized, that my daughter came home, she survived, but she has not been the same. 742 days and counting without accountability from this board or district. This report tonight, this response, was another missed opportunity. It was another trigger. It was another slap in the face. You chose your words carefully. This was not unnoticed. The Webster Dictionary defines accountability as "the quality or state of being accountable, an obligation or willingness to accept responsibility for one's actions." Being accountable means being willing to face and understand that our choice and actions have impacted others, and we acknowledge it. We've stated, myself and others have stated since the beginning, three parties were responsible for this tragedy. The shooter, his parents, and this board and administration. Only one, only one has taken accountability. We have been asking for you to take accountability, which means saying the words that you failed. I know it's, as humans, it's difficult for any of us to accept any idea that our choices, actions or lack of actions, cause great harm, trauma, or even death. We're human. We're good people. You're good people. Your parents, your siblings, your aunts, your uncles. You go to church. You volunteer on the PTO. You donate to charities. I do those things too. I'm a good person. It doesn't mean that you don't accept responsibility for your failures. Instead of being accountable for your actions, you have pushed forward. You've convinced yourself that you're doing the right thing, but you're not. You know you're not. I know. Erin, I know you know you're not. Taking direction from the insurance company attorney at the expense of causing further trauma and damage to all the families, students, and staff is not the right thing, and again, you know it. People have come to your defense recently because you're a good person. Good people make mistakes. Again, I know it. They've recommended prayers, forgiveness, moving forward in love and light. Let's move forward with accountability and love and light.
Yes.
A verse from Proverbs 6 provides a powerful reflection on the consequences of wrongdoing. "There are six things the Lord hates, seven that are detestable to him." This list includes actions such as a lying tongue, a false witness, and those who sow discord. It emphasizes the importance of... It emphasizes the importance of honesty, integrity, accountability in our actions. It encourages commitment to diligence, truthfulness, and the avoidance of actions that lead to conflict and dissension amongst your community. I just ask you to consider your actions, your individual actions, your lack of action, your commitment to this community, to these families, to the students. Look at your character and set a higher standard for yourself and the board. Your gross negligence, wanton indifference, lack of integrity will be your legacy. Our grace and our patience for two years, waiting for you to acknowledge, simply acknowledge that you failed, causing death and trauma, is gone. Our grace and patience is gone. Heather and Mary, resign.
Olivia.
I graduated from OHS in 2017 and I taught sixth grade here in Oxford during the shooting. I want to read for you very quickly an official Oxford Community Schools announcement that dated May eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Dear Oxford families, as many of you may be aware, a school shooting occurred in Texas this morning, reporting at least nine lives lost. Our heartfelt condolences go out to those in the Santa Fe High School community who are experiencing such tragic and devastating loss. As your superintendent and even more so as a parent, it is getting harder and harder to comprehend these violent acts. Please know that the Oxford School community holds student safety and security as its highest priority. I will be sending a parent update of Oxford's ongoing efforts regarding campus security and student safety next week. In addition, the Oxford leader will publish an article with further information on school safety in its May twenty-three edition. Providing a safe learning environment has never been more critical. Sincerely, Tim Throne. I know you are not in the business of answering questions, only causing them, but I ask of you, each of you, to go to bed tonight and think of this announcement. Was it a lie? Was it merely window dressing? I was at the end of my freshman year of college in Washington, D.C. when this announcement came out. My heart broke and my tears fell for Santa Fe, but deep down, I felt grateful to have graduated from OHS because I knew that my home, my school, would have students' backs. I was wrong. And you all have broken my heart too. You lost four kids. You lost Hannah, you lost Tate, you lost Justin, and you lost Madison. This is worse. This is cruel. The writing was on the wall across this nation, in our schools, and finally in your house. You acknowledged it, you ignored it, and you still won't answer for it. I received a world-class education in Oxford and I will never deny that. My teachers have become my friends and even my family, as have my former students. But I now have to reconcile the fact that my safety in your hands and the fact that my brother, my best friend, came home on November thirtieth. That was all due to luck. That is not a world-class education. It's not an education at all. Now I work in anti-corruption for the U.S. Federal Agency for International Development. I spent three months this year in Moldova bordering Ukraine. My coworkers are refugees. They survived protracted war. They have lost everything. So why is it, when I tell them that I taught in Oxford, they look me in the eyes, trying to make sense of the senseless, and ask me why and how you have not answered for your failures? They cannot fathom the suffering you continue to cause. They ask me how any of your behavior the last two years is acceptable. I want you to know that four thousand nine hundred miles away from Oxford, tonight, there are people watching this live stream wondering if any of you even care at all and if you'll ever show it. Do any of you know what Oxford looks like to people on the outside? This May eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen post should haunt you. I don't know how it could not.
So I think you guys need to know who I am. I was born into a family of people that have spent our entire lives advocating for widows and orphans, feeding children, building medical clinics, building orphanages, my entire life. So when you tell me that you care about children, and I'm talking to all of you, I don't believe you. This community does not believe you, okay? And the reason I'm here, I originally came for my own daughter because she was at the school that day. But now I'm here for every child in that school and their families and the victims who don't have their children anymore because what you're doing is sick. And I just want to address the religious people who came into the last meeting and said they were sticking up for the staff members who failed because they love them and they're Christians or whatever their faith is. I don't, I don't even know about that. So I just looked up in the Bible and it said, Jesus said, "Let the little ones come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to such as these." So what you're doing right now, your offense isn't just with the children. You're pissing off God. Okay, so don't hide behind your religion and all the people, Mr. Barnett and the others. You know what? This isn't about the coworkers at the school. And the teachers, I just, the teachers need to know, I'm here because I love the children and I love them. And thank you to all the teachers who've done their job and keep showing up in this terrible pressure cooker that you're holding. Everybody in, all of you, everybody who sits here quiet, you all do nothing, you sit with your stone faces, you're responsible, okay? So we're going to hold you responsible. The shooter is being held accountable. Guess who's next? His parents. And then guess who's next? All of you. We are coming for you. This is not over. And to all the people that are part of the Oxford Community Schools, you need to know this is not over. We will not go away until this is fixed. We're not leaving. You're leaving. And there's more of us than there are you. So however long you want it to go, I told you this before, we're going. And we're not impressed with anything you've done, especially you, Vicky. You said you weren't going to speak to the tragedy. I have a recording of you telling me how you weren't going to get involved and here you're the one reading the, I don't even know what the hell you read. What was that? I mean, I expected better from a doctor, I'm not going to lie. And then Heather, where's Heather? So Heather, just so you know, we know you're listening. We, you know. Listening to the victim's statements from the trial broke my heart. I've never cried that hard in my whole life. Breaks my heart. And you guys are acting like you have our answers. And you've proven to us after two years that you do not have the answers. And you know what? I'm trying to be really nice because I know you're here because you do care about children, but I think you care more about yourself than you do the children. There are people gathering around right now in very high places, listening to this and watching this, and we are collecting evidence and we have been from the very beginning. And this is not going to end well for you. It's not going to, it's going to be actually quite sad because I care about all of you. But I don't care about you more than I do the children of this school and the future that they should have without your presence. You are creating trauma. And Erin, you're a doctor, you should know this. Dr. Markovich, you should know this. Is your job more important to you than the children? Are you just here to, was this supposed to be a cherry on top of your career? It's going to be quite the opposite. And I also want to point out that when charges are brought against you for your failures, your attorney is not going to be sitting in jail with you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm not done.
Your time is up.
Well, I got some more to say.
I appreciate that.
Well, it's a security issue because the Okay to Say program, the doctor, you had another doctor over there talking about Okay to Say and how we need to communicate with them. When I read the report, Okay to Say, the State Police of Michigan called and actually communicated with the, with the, with the school and let you know that there was a countdown on for a shooting on November thirtieth and the school did nothing. So what do you want from us?
You can come to our next meeting, Mark, and finish your comments. We do need to wrap up the meeting. I appreciate you coming.
Yeah. Why would you interrupt a child when they're wrapping up their thoughts? I mean, you guys show zero sensitivity and I'll quit. I've got a lot more, so I'll just keep coming back to every meeting. But I just, I was told when I came in here that this room was cleared of weapons, of guns and knives. But then I see James Summers walking around with his knife hanging out of his pocket while they're confiscating him at the front door. And I'm just curious, why do you get special? Did, did anybody clear these people? Did you have to walk through the screen?
Mark, I appreciate you coming today. Again, we are going to wrap up the meeting now and you can come back. Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Mark.
See you soon.
Okay. Next agenda item is our scheduled activities. As you can see, we have a Board of Education special meeting on December eighteenth. Then we go into our holiday break. And then we have Board of Education meetings resume in January, along with our conversations over coffee. Is there any administrative clarifications, Dr. Markovich? Any final board comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned.